Our special meeting tonight, at 5:30, we had some interviews for a library board position, so we'll now adjourn the special meeting to the regular meeting of the city council. We took our roll call and had the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of our special meeting, so we'll move to item three on tonight's agenda, which is public comment. Are there members of the public that are here this evening that would like to address an item that is not on the agenda? All right, if you would step forward.
Yes.
Yes, true.
All right. Typically, we allow three minutes per individual or five minutes for a group, but I'm sure we can accommodate, and I'm sure you will be succinct. So if you can just tell us who you are and where you live, we'd appreciate it.
Hi. I'm Betsy Clark, and I live on Boardwalk One, and I've been a resident of Larkspur since 2006. Kathy DeFremery and Alan Jones and I have created a proposal, a marsh resiliency proposal, which we emailed to the council members, and which I have extra copies of here, that asks the city to take stewardship of Piper Park Marsh. It's oddly, it's a little-known 24-acre marsh that fringes Piper Park. And a key driver to this proposal is the awareness that without intervention, and as a result of climate change, the marsh will degrade to a mud flat by the end of the century or earlier. A mud flat offers none of the following benefits that a healthy marsh does. A healthy marsh naturally protects Piper Park, Hall, Middle School, and other adjacent shorelines, including Boardwalk One homes, from wind waves and storm surges that add a much lower cost and more effectively than riprap or constructed walls. This 24-acre marsh sequesters as much CO2 in one year as 97 acres of U.S. forest land, the equivalent of not driving a passenger car 250,000 miles, all at no cost to the community. The degradation of the marsh, of a marsh, to mud flats, however, actually adds the stored CO2 back into the atmosphere. Other marsh benefits include providing public open space, educational opportunities, improving air and water quality, and enhancing biodiversity, including for marsh-adapted species such as the Ridgeway's rail. We propose in our, I think you have it, but I'll pass it out after this, the proposal, four steps that will help the city begin to ensure the survival of Piper Park Marsh. Number one, rezone the marsh from R1, it's now zoned residential, to open space, or I believe there's an educational and environmental zoning category, which is consistent with the general plan under shoreline and marsh conservation in Chapter Six. Authorize, number two, authorize a resiliency plan comprised of an initial assessment and a monitoring program to establish baseline data from which to develop a long-term marsh management plan. Number three, include Piper Park Marsh as a carbon-sequestering asset in the city's soon-to-be-revised Climate Action Plan, which is consistent with the 2010 Climate Action Plan's recommendation for maximizing greenhouse gas reductions through conservation. Number four, the easiest one, remove invasive plants through volunteer efforts. I volunteer. We believe these four steps taken by the city will successfully initiate an enduring marsh stewardship program and will benefit all Larkspur residents, and we look forward to working with you to protect the marsh for near and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm Kathy DeFremery, and I've lived in Larkspur for more than 40 years, and like Betsy, I'm here to ask you to help us preserve the resiliency of the Piper Park Marsh. I'd like to just really briefly explain why this is important to have a resiliency plan, and happy to announce that it's actually a very doable thing. Currently, there is no data collected on the impact of either human nor natural stressors on the marsh. It's not even recognized in the currently released Bay Waves Plan as a named marsh. And because we don't have the data, and because changes happen over time very slowly, the various events that affect the watershed and the resilience of the marsh are not easily tracked. What we can be pretty sure of is that the events that will continue to intensify because of climate change and because of human activity within the watershed, and thus it will accelerate impacts on the marsh. So now's the time to act, because basically what this plan really calls for is just collecting data and being aware of what's going on in the marsh. We were surprised to find when we dug into this that actually it can be done in a very low-cost and effective way. By leveraging a great deal of research and the support of some amazing wetlands experts who visited the marsh, we were able to identify a few essential data points which would underpin a simple, sustainable, and high-impact stewardship program. By tracking a few hydrological and biological metrics, and combining them with other information that's already collected within the watershed by other agencies, and correlating that data, the city can have a very good view of what will affect the marsh and what won't. And thus, we'll have the data to make data-driven decisions, and also to be able to seek funding and mitigation for events that might harm the marsh. So at very low cost and in a very timely way, the city can respond to stressors that will come up in the future and be positioned to protect the marsh. Piper Park Marsh is a valuable public asset. It should be recognized and zoned as such. It should be preserved for future generations, and we ask for your support in that effort, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Hi.
Hello. I'm Alan Jones. I'm a Mill Valley resident, but I was privileged to participate with Betsy and Kathy in this study of this amazing marsh. As we drafted our proposal, we tried to be very mindful of the ongoing city processes and practices, and this is, it's for reasons connected with this that we are bringing this proposal to your attention at this time. Firstly, we understand that the city is currently in the process of updating the general plan, and having recognized the importance of preserving the marsh, we'd like the zoning of this property to be included in your review. We recommend that the marsh be zoned open space or some other appropriate designation. Secondly, we understand that the city's Climate Action Plan will soon come up for review, and as been pointed out, the marsh is extremely valuable asset to the city regarding potential climate change. And we'd like to ask that it be included as a valuable asset in the Climate Action Plan. As has been pointed out, it sequesters carbon and has many positive impacts. And thirdly, we'd like the opportunity to work with your staff to refine suggestions for monitoring the marsh, and hopefully prepare a proposal that could be brought to your attention on the agenda at some future date of your choosing. Thanks very much, and we look forward to your thoughtful stewardship of Piper Park Marsh.
Thank you very much. Is there, make sure that the staff gets a copy, and is there contact information on the document? Thank you. I'd like to follow up with you offline, and maybe help align this with regional efforts.
Sure. Thank you.
I'll take care of that.
Thank you for your thoughtful comments. I think we agree those are important issues. The next item on the agenda tonight is the consent calendar, but before the council entertains the consent calendar, the city manager has a statement to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a new law, Senate Bill 1436, went into effect and requires us to announce into the record that there's an item on the consent calendar, item 4.5, which adjusts the salary of an executive of the city, in this case, the fire chief. So I've made that announcement, and you can proceed.
We will now take up the consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that the council would like to remove for discussion? I myself will request 4.6 for a staff report. Council members, are there items on the consent calendar that you'd like to remove for discussion? Are there members of the public that would like to pull items from the consent calendar for discussion? Yes, Mr. Holmes? Will you come to the microphone, please?
James Holmes, Larkspur, request to pull 4.3 and 4.6, please.
Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries for the consent calendar passing with the exception of 4.3 and 4.6?
4.6.
Why don't we start with 4.3? Could we have a brief staff report, please?
The city is a longtime participant in a countywide community development block grant program. It comes up for renewal every three years, and the expiration of this program is upon us, and we've been requested to renew our participation for another three years.
All right, Mr. Holmes, do you have questions or comments?
Yes, I have two questions. Number one, is this currently proposed cooperation agreement the same as the last one, or has the text changed in any respect? And the second question I have is, has any determination been made as to whether this agreement would, to any degree, implicate or subjugate Larkspur to the consent or the enforcement agreement which the county entered into in 2011 with regard to fair housing, and which implemented, or at least adopted, the concept of disparate impact, and I can give you more details, but just to sum it up, potentially required rather significant steps with respect to altering single-family zoning on the basis that it has a disparate impact. So that was something that the county entered into, and so my question would be whether the cooperation agreement would implicate Larkspur. At the time of that cooperation agreement, the general view was that since Larkspur didn't get any federal funding, the county's action and its agreement with HUD didn't affect the city, but I wonder if that is true in light of this agreement.
Would staff like to respond?
The agreement is substantially the same as the past agreement, so there's no effect to the city any different than past agreements. It's just a renewal for three years. And then the CDBG program is not the causal reason for the settlement agreement that Mr. Holmes is citing, and whether or not the city subsequently took CDBG money would have no effect on whether we might have a suit brought against us similar to what was brought against the county.
Thank you. One other point I would make is numbered, on the first page of the agreement, paragraph number two does refer to the county as an, certification of Marin County as an urban county, and I guess I'm concerned about that, and what the implications of that might be, because we've seen in other contexts that agreeing that Marin County can be an urban county can have some potentially discomforting aspects. So I hope that we are fully aware of what the implications of that are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council on 4.3? Should we vote on these individually or take the two items together?
Individually.
Why don't we, is there a motion to authorize the execution of the CDBG grant program and home program cooperation agreement with the county of Marin?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Second. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries? unanimous. The next item is 4.6. We have a brief staff report, please.
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor and council members, and then both I and Mr. Skinner, the Public Works Director, available for any questions. The resolution is to close out the capital improvement program for fiscal year 1617, and summarizes four projects that are outstanding that can now be closed as part of the closure of that year, as we look forward to beginning the next year and its program.
James Holmes, Larkspur. My concern is that one of the four programs to be closed out is the City Hall Deferred Maintenance Program, and the window in the front, in the gable, has not yet been painted. So I would wonder if the city is aware of that, and if they plan to ensure that that will be done before, in fact, the program will be closed out.
Mr. City Manager, would you care to respond?
Did the council want to have any discussion or questions, since the council pulled this item prior to Mr. Holmes' request?
Yes. Are there questions from the council on this item?
Who wanted it pulled? I think it was you.
I pulled it. I received an email today asking for the item to be pulled and a brief staff report given. I read the content of the email. It was identifying a gap between invoice, correct me, Mr. City Manager, if I get this wrong, between claimed or invoiced costs versus authorized payments.
Yes, I think the email that the vice mayor's referring to had noted, as we explained in the staff report, that we are closing the project with all, proposing to pay all invoices for which there's sufficient documentation. There is, there are additional charges from one of the contractors, the one for the City Hall project, that we have deemed insufficient in terms of documentation and whether or not the amounts are appropriate. We're not proposing to pay those amounts, and if things are to change, we'll bring a subsequent action to that effect.
And while it was brought to our attention, any comment on the gable window?
That I'll have to defer to Mr. Skinner.
Our Public Works Director, Julian Skinner?
Yes. Good evening. The subject window was initially part of the City Hall Improvement Program, but in the course of finalizing that construction contract with the contractor and having the difficulties and some of the extra work claims that we were disputing, there were a couple of items of work that we deleted from that contract in an effort to finalize that work and move on. The window was one of them. We are aware it's an outstanding deficiency, and our maintenance crew is looking at other contractors now to complete that work. So we are aware it's still outstanding.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, is there any other discussion or questions regarding item 4.6? Is there a motion for the recommendation for closing the four projects in the fiscal year 201617, capital improvement program, and amending the budget to reconcile actual expenditures with the adopted budget amounts? Is there a motion?
Yeah, a move to say what you just did.
Second.
All right. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. That concludes the consent calendar for this evening. The next item is the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'd like to start by telling you, very excited, for the first time, I think, in the entire fiscal year, I can say that the Public Works Maintenance Crew is fully staffed, with two new employees onboard, and I can tell you that Bob Quinn, our supervisor, is just grinning from ear to ear to actually be able to deploy a full crew. We've actually, in addition, been supplementing the crew to get caught up, and I think folks are starting to see that we are hitting the parks pretty hard, the median's pretty hard to catch up from all the rain and all the subsequent growth. So excited to announce that. We've been very busy on staff, not only preparing the budget, but also working on education materials related to Measure C, what Measure C does for our community, and what the council may potentially consider putting on the ballot in November of 2017. We conducted four community meetings recently. They were increasingly better attended as we went along, and word got out about the meetings, so that was great. We don't have any community meetings specifically scheduled at this time going forward, but we thought it would be great to do one here at the council chamber for you, and also to record the presentation for the public. So we are going to do that at the June 21 council meeting, and invite folks to come or watch online, or then watch the recorded presentation to learn about Measure C. We also have started the process of making folks aware of the material that's out there for them to see, and to that effect, we sent a mailer out that should be arriving, if it hasn't already, in your mailboxes today. We were expecting it to arrive today or tomorrow, and it directs folks to where they can find more information as we look forward to having this discussion with the community. As the council knows, the community has expressed a desire to see our road conditions in particular improved, and to date, Measure C has been instrumental in the work we've been able to get done, and we'd like folks to hear about how we think renewing Measure C could allow us to go forward and do the entire road network. And Mr. Skinner, I think, should actually speak a little bit about that tonight during his CIP presentation. And if there are any neighborhoods that would like us to come to a meeting, they can just contact Mr. Skinner or me, and we'd be happy to schedule something and come out to the neighborhood or host it in one of our facilities. I want to make the council and the public aware that consistent with our policies about transportation and bike and pedestrian networks, at the request of the Transportation Authority of Marin, we wrote a letter in support of their grant application for a bike share program that they're trying to implement here in Marin. So we sent that in on your behalf, saying that we would support having such a program in Marin, and hope that the grant dollars could make that realized. And this would be a program akin to one that you've seen in San Francisco and in other communities where bikes are made available at different stations around the community and can be ridden from station to station. So excited to see TAM make effort in that regard. I want to note, and it's on the consent calendar, there are adjustments to the summer schedule for council meetings. There are two meetings that are being canceled. One is July 5, and the other is August 2, and we did add one meeting, and that's July 26. And the discussion about the Measure C ballot measure will take place at the July 19 and July 26 council meetings. So folks are encouraged to mark that down on their calendar. And then lastly, I just wanted to note that the published version of the agenda on the description for item 8.1, which is the requested revision to the permit conditions for the Marin Rowing Association, the recommendation in the description, we accidentally cut and pasted the recommendation from item 8.3. So the corrected recommendation, which is to amend and renew the terms that are placed on the Marin Rowing Association, is now on the dais and in the published version in the back, and we apologize for that error. The staff report itself has all the correct information in it. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back to you. I certainly was active in some different committee meetings, but I think the council members are going to report about those meetings during council member reports.
Are there questions of the city manager on his oral report? Members of the public care to comment on the city manager's oral report? All right, seeing none. Council members' oral reports and comments.
I actually do have a question.
Okay.
Dan, I was under the impression from Monday's meeting that you were going to frame sort of the fire consolidation discussion, and then we would elaborate on it. Am I?
Would you like me to do that now or under item 6.2?
It's up to the vice mayor, but just want to make sure that we get consistency that way.
It's listed here. We'll capture that after we hear any additional reports. Council member reports this evening, other than those listed in the agenda? Council member Morrison, please.
I have the Larkspur social calendar here. Chamber of Commerce had its successful ribbon cutting at the Marriott Courtyard in Larkspur Landing. It was a nice turnout. I know Vice Mayor Hillmer was there, and Mayor Harf was there, and it was nice, wasn't it, Dan? It's a beautiful remodel, so we get a chance to go and take a look at the foyer. We also attended Valerie Pitt's farewell reception. That was also a nice turnout, and I know that our mayor Harf did a resolution that she was quite touched by. And then one more. We now have a monthly Twin City Village. The village for Twin Cities is Larkspur and Corder Madera, and it's helping, it's run by volunteers, and it's helping individuals, elderly-aged community, to stay in their home as long as possible by volunteers taking, either coming and just visiting them, or taking them to doctor's appointments, carpooling, and shopping, or whatever they need. So we had our first happy hour at Left Bank. It was really, 45 people turned out, members. It was really special. And then we also had a coffee hour this morning, which was also a nice success. So we're doing our best to get the, to make Larkspur an age-friendly community.
Great.
I'm also going to report on the May 22 meeting for the 2050 Plan. I'm on the steering committee with our mayor. It was an intimate public meeting. It was a nice kickoff for our discussion. We talked about the revision and updating of the projects and their financial cost. So just briefly what we talked about, we talked about updating on our city hall, our community facility at Rose Lane, so Library Larkspur Community Center. We talked about the Fire Station 16. They need to update the women's bathroom in that area. We talked about parking, park and rec, the Measure A, police stations, sidewalks, storm drains, streets, roads, and bridges. And then Dan Schwartz gave us an update. He met with the Measure C board along with the library board. So it was probably a two-hour meeting, and we got a lot accomplished, a lot of things to discuss, and a lot of things to complete. So it was a success. Thank you.
Dan, is there another one scheduled for that?
We do not have that yet.
Thank you very much. Other council reports? Larry?
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up on one of the items that Councilmember Morrison had since our rec director, Dick Whitley, is here. There were actually three community events honoring Valerie Pitts and her tenure and accomplishments as the superintendent of Larkspur School District. And the one last Friday was actually put on by the teachers and the teachers, Larkspur Employee Association, or something like that. It's their teachers' union. But Valerie has been eyeing this picture with Valerie in it that had super cool summer school. And being that we share our park and rec facility with the school, you know, we acknowledge, you know, all the things that she's done in terms of, you know, sharing services as well as collaboration with the city, and, you know, we have pointed out there probably at least 14 different projects we've done together. But Dick presented that picture that she's been eyeing for weeks and weeks, and we gave that as her parting gift.
Nice. Perfect.
Very nice. Councilmember Way?
I'll chime in after 6.2, after the city manager has given his update.
All right. 6.2 on the agenda identifies June 5, 2017, the meeting, the Ad Hoc Committee for Fire Consolidation with Corder Madera. Mr. City Manager, would you like to help us?
I'll just give a brief summary of what was accomplished, and then council members Chu and Way are the members of the Ad Hoc Committee, and I'm sure we'll have things to add. The Ad Hoc Committee is comprised of two members of each council, Larkspur and Corder Madera, and it's supported by the two town managers, myself and Todd Cusamano, as well as Chief Shirts, and the fire personnel, who are working hard to help make consolidation or merger of the two fire departments a reality. As the council knows, we are functionally acting as one agency, but there's a lot of work to be done to streamline that by making us actually one agency. We went through a whole host of issues, ranging from our different liabilities and assets that we're bringing to the table, to key issues and decisions that we wanted to have. have the ad hoc committee help us with. The first one is the one that, from an operational procedural standpoint, was very significant for guidance for Mr. Kuzumano and myself, which is that the plan had for the longest time been that we would get all the approvals from all the different agencies that have to give us approval, and then we would form the joint powers authority, and then the staff would move over the day we formed the agency. And it's a similar model to what we had done with the police authority when we had brought San Anselmo into the police authority. Since the passage of the Public Employees Pension Reform Act a few years ago, the cleanliness of the process with CalPERS to blend two agencies is not what it once was, and it wasn't exactly the easiest streamlined process before. Now, it's a little more complicated even than it was before. And after much consultation with some folks at PERS and with some consultation with our own labor advisors and attorney, the general outline of the plan now is to move forward at a more expedited rate with the formation of the joint powers authority as an agency, and to essentially have it come into being so that instead of the two towns trying to negotiate a PERS contract so that the employees can transfer over, the new authority will actually work out the deal with CalPERS. That will clean up a lot of problems that we're having with the forms and the boxes and the, and the general process at CalPERS. And as much as the council knows I like to pick on CalPERS, I don't totally blame the folks involved here. They have a process, and we're a square peg trying to be shoved into a round hole, and this gives us the option to become a round peg so that we can fit more nicely into their process. So, the ad hoc committee generally tries not to make decisions, but rather to give guidance, and then the decisions are brought back to the full council. We did ask the ad hoc committee to give us stronger guidance on this issue so we could move forward and spend the money to expedite this process. The actual formation of JPA will come to the both councils for approval, but the ad hoc committee indicated that they felt we were on the right track, and so we are going to be moving post haste to put this JPA proposal together and get it in front of both councils. The second thing, therefore I turn it back, that was very important to all of us in terms of ensuring that we moved forward with something that sounds simple but isn't as simple as it sounds, which is what is the name of this agency? And there's a whole host of reasons for that, not the least of which is that we want to start ordering all the things you have to order if you're going to have an agency, whether that ranges from the uniforms and shirts that folks are going to wear, to what paint is going to be on a truck, to what's going to be on letterhead. That's actually a very time-consuming process, and so for a while now, our fire personnel have expressed a desire to follow the lead of the police authority and use the name Central Marin. And so, the fire personnel spoke to the ad hoc committee on Monday and asked that they blessed the name Corder Madera Fire Department. I'm sorry. Central Marin Fire Department. I keep having this, it has the same initial, so it keeps tricking me. They're probably gleefully smiling in Corder Madera about that. Sorry, Central Marin Fire Department. And so, the ad hoc committee, I think, is hoping to get a head nod of some sort from the remaining council members tonight that you're okay with that. And if I see four head nods, and Mr. Kuzumano saw five head nods last night, then we'll be in good shape to start ordering the things we need to order. So, now I'll turn it over to Councilmember Chu and Way, who might want to go into more detail.
Just one question first. I guess Larkspur Fire Department and others did not?
At all.
Come up.
No comment.
Councilmember Way?
Well, one thing that was very impressive about that was that, that name has 100% acceptance by the, all of our firefighters and our fire chiefs. So, that was a really important part of the rebranding and the community building. So, very thorough, thank you very much. I just want to say I was very impressed on Monday about how thorough the decisions and the vetting was by this committee, and we've done a lot. You all have done a lot, you and Chief Shirts and the fire professionals in their respective agencies and respective representatives to the unions. And I really appreciate that because I think this is coming along great, and I was very pleased Monday how we were able to reach some conclusions, and like to see that this is probably the strategy forming the JPA now, will get the paperwork and things completed in a much smoother and quicker way. So, I don't think, I think you were very thorough. Was there anything else that we didn't?
Nothing from that perspective, but I think one of the things I want to applaud all parties involved in, you know, primarily, you know, the firefighters, the chief and his senior staff and the, and the managers, is, you know, getting us to this point because, you know, whenever you go through a consolidation like this, whether it's a corporate one or in this case, public entities, you're, you're always trying to figure out, okay, well, what's equitable? And the biggest surprise is that when you work through all the numbers, it's almost 50/50 for everything. And the thing is, even with our capital assets, there, both of us came out like right at 3.1 million, and you're talking maybe a few hundred dollars off in one direction versus the other. So, if you're not worried about the thing where you're sitting at a restaurant and trying to split the bill exactly? The fact is, everybody will benefit well beyond the small differences in, in terms of what is the exact 50/50, and that goes for both equipment as well as the operational expenditures. So, with Central Marin Police, you know, it took several years to get to the point where we had enough data to finally come up with a funding formula that we can adopt for several years going forward, you know, as Councilmember Morrison knows from our last discussion. But we're going to start out, you know, at 50/50 from an operational standpoint. And kind of the interesting thing, I think, that came up in, in terms of the naming, you know, the legal way to do it, although, you know, there's a way to still call us Central Marin Fire Department, you know, because we're a joint powers authority, you know, usually the name authority is in it like Central Marin Police Authority. But the firefighters felt that as police officers, you know, that's part of their job, enforcement, the authority thing. So, they felt more comfortable, and it was more of their own identity that they are a fire department. So, we were wholeheartedly behind, you know, the name that they selected, and I'm glad we can move forward with it.
And one last thing, I think this conversation's been going on for a while between Larkspur and Corder Madera, but it really sort of got moving a little bit and under Mayor Chu's leadership a couple of years ago, when the two of us met with two council members from Corder Madera to really sort of figure out how politically we can make this a priority, and of course, then our city managers did too. And I think that we're kind of being watched by a lot of other coun, a lot of other councils in this county to see if this could be a model for them, and I think we've done, and we'll be able to show them an effective political way, and working with our staff and with the professionals, to make it the best outcome for the community. So, I'm very pleased that we were able to do that, and how much we've been able to find a cooperative relationship with the Corder Madera Council.
Well, I think we're still the only joint powers authority for law enforcement in the state of California, and the fact that PEPRA started in 2013, and we're the first agency to go into them since they don't know how to handle this, speaks volumes in a sense that, you know, we talk about shared services and consolidation, and we're doing it as opposed to other communities that are just kind of talking about it but not doing a whole lot.
Well, and the money saved alone, you'd think that more people would start consolidating, right?
Mr. City Manager?
For the benefit of the public, before we leave this item, we did video record the meeting on Monday. Both the city and the town have sites, have pages on our websites about the effort, and once the video's available, we'll provide a link on both pages for folks who want to watch the meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for July 24th. It'll be here in the council chambers, and we'll video record that meeting as well.
Just for full acknowledgement, we stand on the shoulders of our past councils and others in building these relationships, so we're very grateful to be the beneficiaries of all the work that's led up to this great opportunity. All right, any other comments on the reports for, from the council this evening?
Nope.
All right. Before we move to the public hearings, I'd like to ask who is here tonight for item 8.1 on the agenda? This is the Marin Rowing Club item. Would the council object to my moving that up on the agenda before we do the public hearing? So, we'll move to business item 8.1 right now. Requested revision to the permit to conditions for the Marin Rowing Association 2017 to 2020. May we have a staff report, please? Is my reordering the agenda sufficient, Mr. City Manager, or do we need to take any other action? All right, thank you. Good evening, Director Whitley.
Good evening, Mayor Hillmer and members of the council. This, a quick summary and background to this item, that in 1986, then-city manager Doug Clark created a list of conditions for the Redwood High School rowing team's use of Corder Madera Creek. Condition number three of this document has read in part that during weekdays, use of the catamaran-type coaching launches shall cease at sunset, with the exception of the first day of Pacific Standard Time through January 31st, when launch activities will cease at 6:00 PM. When these conditions were first written in 1986, the Redwood High School had a rowing team, and their practices were held after school for the boys' team from 3:30 until 6:00 PM. The text for condition number three reflected these practice schedules. Redwood High School disbanded their rowing teams, and now the Marin Rowing Association has athletes from all over Marin County high schools on its roster. The majority of high schools are now dismissed around 3:30 PM, resulting in a need to push the start of afternoon practices back to 4:00 PM. Practices now conclude around 6:30 PM, 30 minutes later than historically scheduled practice times. The Marin Rowing Association has requested that condition number three be amended to read during weekdays, use of the catamaran-type coaching launches shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM and shall not proceed prior to 8:00 AM on weekends. Launch activities shall cease at 6:30 PM on weekdays and 5:00 PM on weekends. Approval of this, of this change will allow Marin Rowing Association's coaching staff to safely administer their full practice schedule. A staff recommendation is that the council hear the staff report, take public comment, and approve the requested revision to condition number three of the permit conditions for the Marin Rowing Association. And I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions of staff from the council? Councilmember Way?
So, to clarify for me, this is a permit that has an expiration date in 2028?
No, that is for the lease for their?
The lease for the building, okay.
This particular, this list of conditions is renewed every three years.
Okay, I wasn't, okay. So, the renewal is coming up now for that one?
That's correct.
And you're not asking or recommending any other changes to the 12 points that are here?
I'm not.
Okay. And then lastly, how do we, how is it, these 12 permit conditions, how are they reviewed or enforced?
The only one that really has any enforceable teeth to it is condition number three, which specifies times during which certain activities can take place. The remainder of the conditions overall, other than liability, insurance, and things along those lines, are based primarily on a good neighbor policy, and it's neighbors who are up and down the creek who are good enough to get in touch with me and with the Marin Rowing Association Director Sandy Armstrong. If things are not to their liking, we do our best to make sure that they get put back to the, to reflect the conditions.
Okay.
Other questions of staff? I have a question. We acknowledged that there was a change in terms of the attract, attraction for countywide reach for athletes who work out there now versus just Redwood High School. Has there ever been a discussion about what that might have meant in terms of impacts to the, to the adjacent properties or residential areas nearby?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
All right, thank you.
Well, I do have a question, maybe you're on?
Councilmember Morrison?
How many people participate in the Marin Rowing Association?
That is a number I'm not familiar with. Is Marin Rowing Association here? Several staff members from the Marin Rowing Association might be able to answer that question for you.
Okay, thank you.
We're limited to a certain number.
Could you please come to the microphone, please? State your name for the record.
My name is Kate Boyd, and I'm president of the board for Marin Rowing, and I don't know the exact number, but our membership is restricted to a certain number, so we don't exceed that number of athletes.
But you don't know that? Oh, darn it.
It's a 125 person number right now. But that number has been the same for?
I like that, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions of staff? Thank you, thank you very much. Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comment on this item? Yes, sir. If you could please come to the microphone and identify yourself for the record.
Is this a comment on what he said or what I want to read?
Any.
You have three minutes to comment on anything related to the agenda item.
Oh, I was told it was five. Thank you for your time. I assume you all had enough time to read my letter and hopefully take a look at the?
Could you identify yourself so we know what you're referring?
Oh, sorry. My name is Elliot Zalt. I'm a 25-year resident of the Greenberry Boardwalk.
I believe we have read your material.
Great, thank you. I did not know about this avenue of appeal, otherwise I would have done it many, many years ago. I have been calling, oh, trying to rush. My major concern is the noise created by the rowers, their coaches, the rowing itself, the screaming, the grunting, the motorboats with speakers, coaches with megaphones. These noises, the sounds carry up and down the creek for several hours a day. It is always present when I get home from work, and my home is my castle, and my peace is constantly being disturbed. I ask that a noise decibel test be given. Again, it was one given many years ago, and it read that the noise level was right up to the legal limit. I would like a noise level test be given when the Marin Rowing Association does not know about it and will really see how much noise is being produced. The speeding of the boats, especially the motorboats, create a wake that is illegal in any waterway in this country. How is it that a city can give a permit to this club to break the most universal law of boating? Will this council please try to answer that question if you can? Environmentally, this is a sensitive area, and I'm sure an environmental study would show an impact on the environment. I've been calling Sandy, Director Sandy Armstrong several times a year for many years, only to be strung out with empty promises that it will improve. I've been assuaged so many times, she would talk to her coaches again, not to congregate, and give megaphone lessons in front or near my house. It continues. After years of anger and frustration of being led so many, misled so many, lied to so many times, I ask that the Marin Rowing Association permit be revoked because of ongoing violations. I insist that the hours of operation not be extended to 6:30 PM. They have admittedly been going till at least 6:30 or 6:45 for many, many years, and when that was brought up at the meeting, and they finally got busted on it, now they're applying for a longer time, which would take even more noise. I realize the Marin Rowing Club, the Marin Rowing Club has value to the community, especially the young participants, but I have a right to peace in my home. There are many others that are unhappy as I, and I'm putting together a petition of those that finally want to speak up. There's a lot of people that don't want to be the bad guy because they think they're doing a good thing, and they're just fed up with the noise and the wake, among other things. If you choose not to revoke the permit, I hope that you will consider perhaps a six-month probation period where the behavior of the club can be observed. During this time, the Marin Rowing Association, Boardwalk residents, and perhaps the city of Larkspur can engage in renewing the obsolete permit conditions that have now been pretty much the same for approximately 30 years. We need rules that are? We need rules that are clear and can be enforced. These rules right now are not enforceable and there's no one there even doing the enforcing. Would any of you sitting before me here tolerate this racket near your front door when you come home from work every day? Thank you."
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes.
If you felt the conditions of the approval were being properly enforced, would you be willing to consider the extension of the time?
Well, I think I would like them to prove that they're going to because they haven't done it for the 25 years that I've been living there.
So the issues you're flagging for us are, are those of the wake due to excessive speed and the noise?
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure. And I was told by Sandy Armstrong that I'm pretty sure the number of people in the club is about 180, something like that, I think is what she told me. I think that the president of the association should know how many members are in there.
Thank you for your comments.
I have a question, Mr.-
Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments this evening? Hi.
Cindy Winter. I have a problem with the bike path and the architecture of the rowing club, specifically where the multi-use path runs parallel to the creek. There's a perpendicular path that goes down to that parallel path from the Bonner Shopping Center. And the architecture of that patio, right at that intersection, is a very sharp angle and the wall is about four or five feet high, and it can be very difficult to see around that blind corner, and I'm concerned that sometime an accident might happen. And one way to partially alleviate it would be to avoid parking and stacking the boats, the skulls, whatever you call them, in that corner because when they're stacked up there, that increases the lack of sight distance. So I wonder if the rowing club could make a rule about how they park those boats.
So your issue is, is a safe line of sight from the bike path?
Exactly. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions regarding this agenda item? Yes, sir. If you could please identify yourself at the microphone for the record.
Hi, my name's David Colton. I am a member of Marin Rowing. I've lived in Green Bay for 19 years, and I also live on the creek. Marin Rowing has programs for adults and for kids, meaning those in high school and on the weekends for those in junior high. And the people endeavor to follow the rules that are set out on the creek, and it just seems to be an issue of equity that, with the number of people that, that are using the creek, that every once in a while there has to be a, someone deviates and offends someone. But the director of the club has always tried to get all the members, all the coaches, all the people rowing, to be cognizant of their neighbors. And as a neighbor, I have to tell you that in my building, except for me, who gets up early to row, no one is bothered by it, no one ever complains to me. So I think we've been a good neighbor and we endeavor to be a good neighbor, and would ask that you continue our, our permit.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes.
Given your unique relationship to the rowing club, both as a neighbor and a member, would you feel it fair to have, have the city assess whether the conditions of the approval have, are being met by going out and measuring the noise or witnessing some of the activities?
Well, I think Sandy Armstrong would invite any of you to come out at any time to visit with us and, and see what we do. As a-
Well, what about unannounced, to measure the sound and see the speed of the boats?
Sure. I mean, I can't, I'm speaking as an individual-
Sure, I'm asking you as an individual.
And it sounds like that's an equitable thing to do. I would ask you that since I monitor, I see what goes on, on the creek on a daily basis from the time we have breakfast in the morning until we have dinner, looking over the creek, that there's a lot of other issues that are going on on the creek that are detrimental to the environment of the creek, the physical environment, that would also merit your monitoring of them on an ad hoc basis. So yes and answer to your question, I'd invite you to come out and see what else is going on out there.
We'd also appreciate any specific descriptions of things you might be seeing that we should be aware of, too.
Interestingly enough-
Those, those items that are not on the agenda tonight.
Right, no, no. Interestingly enough, there has been something that I'm not going to go into, but one of my neighbors has contacted the police department about it, and the response on the second, his second call was, "It's you calling again." So, you know, it's, it's a public, it's public domain, there's a lot of things going on out there, and I think 99% of the people that are out there, residents and members of the club and everyone else that uses the creek tries their darndest to stay within the strictures of, of being a good neighbor.
Well, we, we appreciate your comments, and certainly the city has always supported the rowing club, but we also have property owners that have rights to, so-
Absolutely.
-trying to balance those interests.
Absolutely. There's 36 young women and men in high school right now in Florida representing the city of Larksburg and Marin Rowing at the national championships.
And we're very proud of them.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this agenda item? Yes, sir. Well, we'll see if there's time for a second round. Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Batsholder. I live in Berkeley, but I'm a, I've been a coach at the club for 21 years now. And to, I feel it's important to address Mr. Zalta's concerns. And I, I can speak for myself that over 21 years, I've come to appreciate what a special place it is to live here. More than a few times, and I think it, I discovered it first when our coaching launch died, and I was upstream and I was just allowed to float and take in the peace. And it's a, it's a, it's a magnificent place where you live. And I, the silence is something special. It's not total, but it's something that I've come to respect for the neighbors that live there. And for myself, I no longer use a megaphone. I make it a point of communicating with my crews where we will be out of your shot so that I can then speak to them. I use hand signals to communicate great distances rather than, than yell, to ask my crews to stop, to turn around, whatever it may be. I realize that we share the space not only with, not, not only with the residents, but with the ferries and the, and the wildlife. And I think the, as, as a coach, it's incumbent upon me to make the membership aware of that on a consistent basis, and I, I actively do. I, I don't know where exactly, you live on the boardwalk, sir?
Right.
I, I don't know exactly where you live, but I think-
Here, we could, please address your comments to the council.
The, the best way, as often as possible, we conduct our practices often the distance. And it is also, Sandy's great concern, anytime we get news from the ferry captains or from the neighbors, we do hear from Sandy. And there is, I will admit, there is turnover in the coaching staff, and from time to time it takes a little re-education of just how special the place is, not only to us, but to everybody around. How to work with the ferry captains so that they can conduct their business without us impeding them in any way. Certainly the wildlife, which I, I don't recall the woman who brought it to our attention in quite a passionate way, but-
Barbara Solzman, probably.
From, maybe. It's, you know, it's, it's another, it's another part of the pleasure of being on the creek, and I wish to avail myself to any questions you might have.
Well, I value very much your description of your efforts to be aware of, of the sound levels and your enjoyment of the quiet, quiet enjoyment of the creek itself.
I have a question.
I was wondering if you have suggested your practices, which seem to be best practices, to be club policy with respect to distance away before you start talking to the crew and using hand signals to avoid creating noise near the residential properties?
As, it's something we share among the coaching staff, but as you can appreciate, people discover rowing and come to the club new to the sport, new to all the nuances of what it is to be on the water at that time of day. Even as an experienced rower, I, I am most concerned with safety through the fall and winter months when it's, it's very difficult to see and you, you have people trying to work their way out to the, to the ferry channel. Whether inadvertently or unexpectedly, sometimes sound is made trying to get out there safely. However, it is never excusable, in, in my opinion and in the practice of the club, to speak along the boardwalk. It's, it's quite, it should be quite well-known that people should shut up, as we like to say. Coxins, Coxins have a megaphone, not a megaphone, I'm sorry, a speaker system within the boat. And as soon as we approach the trestle, it's turn the, turn the volume down, turn the volume off is optimal. If they can turn it, if they can keep it low, perhaps low with a whisper, maybe that's acceptable. But ideally, get through that stretch of water as silently as possible. And there was another point I wanted to make.
Well, your comments are extremely helpful from my point of view.
And further, I, I think the club would welcome announced, unannounced visits of any length of time to observe the practices and, and see what's, what's best in the interest of the neighborhood and our continued involvement in the area.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Way, I believe, has a question for you.
So Mr. Zalta submitted us a videotape that he had done, about a nine-minute-long videotape from his deck. And I, he's out more in the channel, I guess that's considered the channel area, which is past the trestle.
Yes.
One of his concerns was wake. Is there a different activity that's done in that section than it is further up into the creek that would affect those homes on the boardwalk at a greater extent? I watched the videotape.
The practice of, of coaching and maintaining safe, maintaining the safety of the crews usually involves the, the coaching launches matching the speed of the boat. But if, beyond that, I don't think it's exceptional. I think it's, if I, if I'm answering your question, actually.
So, in his video, the, one of the coaching launches kind of hung a big U-turn and spun around a lot, is that something that's a typical maneuver down there?
At that point, yes. Typically, we turn around because it's a, it's, well, I can't say, no, I can't say that it's typical. Often, we'll, we'll make the turnaround by the, the turning basin of the ferry, and then we will, and then we'll work, if we're going to go toward the trestle, so often we go through it, not, not exclusively, obviously. There are times when the conditions in the bay seem to cut the practice area short, and so we will direct crews into the, into the calmer water of that, that stretch between the turning basin and the trestle. It is, it's not, it doesn't matter what the conditions are in the bay, it doesn't mean that we can use megaphones, it doesn't mean that we can floor it either with the, the launches. If, so, I, I can't, no, it's not typical?
Okay.
I certainly hope it's not typical. I speak for myself, it's not typical. And I could be the one in the video and you could, and, and I, and it could have been the one day when I did turn around a couple times there, but I wouldn't say it's typical.
And if a resident has an issue or complaint, who did, what's their mechanism? Do they come to your executive director or to?
I think it's, well, she, she passes on the information right away. It's, it's, it's actually most distressing, I, I believe Mr. Zalta's spoken to Sandy many, many times, and I, I wish I could satisfy him by saying just how often she comes back to us, quite angrily, most of the time. This, we've gone over this, she's as tired of it as, as he is, I'm sure. He's, he's beyond tired of it. But she's, she's sick of this, too, and it's, it's us, and we have, we, through, over time, and I, or I can say, I will, I will pledge my efforts to inform my fellow coaches that we can't do this. I mean, and whether it's a friendly reminder or wake the up, this is, you know, this has to stop. And so, the message is getting through to the coaching staff, and I, as I suggest, pledge myself as an additional person to enforce whatever Sandy presents.
Thank you.
Councilmember Morris, any other questions?
Yes, Mayor. Mark, how many coaches are there?
There are, let's see, there's several. And there is a, an adult coaching staff and there is a junior coaching staff. I believe on the junior coaching staff, there might be upwards of eight coaches, and the adult coaching staff may be five to, five to seven.
An adult is in the morning?
Yes.
Junior's in the afternoon?
Correct.
And then, do you have somebody, every day, there's, there, you practice every day, right? You're out there every day, the Marin Rowing? There's boats on the water every day?
Yes.
And then, practice distance, I, I don't follow. Practice distances, as Catherine Way said, all the way out towards where?
We, there are landmarks that we refer to. One would be the turning basin, which is often where we begin practices. We get to the turning basin on the far side, on the, on the east side of the turning basin. We go off into the bay.
No houses?
Beyond the houses.
And that's where the coaches should have a discussion about how to practice that day, and that's where you would recommend they have a major discussion?
Absolutely.
And then you said you don't use a megaphone?
I didn't.
So, could, I mean, no one else needs a megaphone?
Or I have a capacity for yelling, that's-
But, you don't use a megaphone at work, so I wonder if other coaches can learn to do the same?
It's-
I'm just, I'm just, it's just a question.
It is something to be suggested and explored, yes.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your candor.
A woman, a woman spoke earlier about the bike path as well. I, I don't know if to suggest, two ideas came to mind. One would be perhaps a, a stop sign on the bike path or a mirror opposite the intersection.
Appreciate your thoughtful comments.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments? And that will give you a chance to follow up.
I'm Rick Gordon, I'm a member of the board-
Welcome.
...that counts. Just a couple of observations. One of the problems we have with Elliot's location is that it is between the trestle, as Mark described, and on its, on the way out to the, the turning basin, which is where the ferries start out. Clearly, if we could just get out there easily and row out there, everything would be great, but it's a single-file area because it's very narrow. And we are in a position of having to send the, the boats, the kids and their boats ahead, or the launch will go ahead and wait for them to catch up. But there are continual safety issues in making sure that the program is run well and that nobody gets hurt. And so, I would guess that some of the speeding that goes on is when there is catching up that needs to be done by the launches to catch up with the kids to make sure that the program is proceeding safely. And it's just unfortunate that that is where Elliot lives, and believe me, I mean, we, we talk about this all the time at the board level, as well as with the staff, and so it's a continual effort. Another thing I'll say is that the launches are a lot quieter than they used to be. I mean, the, the engines are very quiet now. In a couple of years, we'll be going to all-electric engines. So we're- So, we're really trying to continually improve the program and, and make it a better program for the neighbors.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to comment?
James Holmes, Larkspur. The point that occurs to me is that the current condition, which requires cessation at sunset, has the benefit of moving to reflect the light, the times when there is adequate light, and to require that they stop when it's dark. If the proposed condition were implemented, then we would be explicitly authorizing activities through 6:30 PM on weekdays, and that is, half the year, that is pitch black. So, I can see both safety issues from, resulting from that authorization, and I can also see when it's pitch black, they have no choice but to use megaphones. Hand signals certainly won't work. So, it seems to me that something that is a moving standard, that basically requires them to practice in the light rather than the dark, addresses both, better addresses both noise and safety considerations. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Mr. Zalta, would you like to briefly, please? I'm hoping you're, I'm hoping you're going to offer, make a suggestion on how we can work together.
Oh, I wanted to comment on some of the things they said.
You can feel free to comment on anything you want, I was just hoping.
Well, I have suggestions, is that these rules be revised. These are obsolete rules. The rowing club, as they said, has grown exponentially. There's nine, eight or nine boats, motorboats. And it's not the motors that make the noise, that's not the complaint, you can barely hear the motors, it's the people screaming and the megaphones and all that. There's eight rowers in each boat, and there's about, and there's three boats per coach. Multiply that out, coming and going all over the place, it's mayhem out there. So, these promises have been made over and over again. And if more of the coaches, or all of the coaches, as Ann suggested, could use their voice only and not megaphoned, as this experienced coach has done, we probably wouldn't be here. I also think that it's, it seems to me that there has to be an electronic wireless equipment in this day and age of going to the moon, that could be put in their ear and the coaches could talk to the rowers without megaphones and give them their directions. She says she can't find anything that works. Kind of hard to believe. The other, last thing I'd like to say, this gentleman here, I'm not sure where he lives, I don't recognize him from the Green Bay boardwalk.
All right, you can keep your comments coming to us, please.
Oh, okay. I don't think he's a resident of the Green Bay boardwalk. There's other places on the west side of the highway. And I believe that, I'm guessing that about 90% of the rowing is done on the east side, not where he lives. It's not a big problem over there. And where I live, there's the hill across there, which increases the sound, and it's very narrow, it increases the weight, and it increases the congestion. It, it's almost impossible for them, I think it is impossible for them to follow the rules that they are given in this creek. It's just grown out of proportion, and I just don't think they can do it. I'd like to see them do it, I'm willing to help work on ways to do it so that we can be happy.
That's a great suggestion, thank you.
Thank you.
You have something else to add, sir? Something new?
I think the council tries to keep a civil tone and rational discussion. And so, do I have something new? This gentleman's made a number of comments which are somewhat inflammatory and, and somewhat lacking in rationality.
Oh, you're free to clarify if you so wish.
I don't think there's mayhem out there. I think that our safety record is exemplary, particularly if you look at it on a nationwide Whether there's 90% of our boats out on the east side of 101 or on the west side of 101, depends on the day. I can tell you that I've sat on my deck morning and night and seen all of our boats on our side. And so, it just, we're trying to be a good neighbor, and I think that's what you were asking for. And I think Mark is a great example of our coaches. I don't think there's a finer person out there than Sandy Armstrong, who tries diligently to teach both the adults and the kids to have cognizance of everyone around them. And I think that's what is pervasive in our system, and that's what we're trying to do with our neighbors. So, I, I'd like you to understand that that's the way marine rowing works.
I, I hear your comments and appreciate them, thank you. Just a question, is the Green Bay boardwalk in Larkspur's jurisdiction?
No. The very first two facilities of the boardwalk are, but the residents are not. Nor is, nor is the waterway in question.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Other, Mr., Councilmember Chu?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for staff. Who, who has the legal enforcement authority out there? Is it the Coast Guard? Or, because we don't have police boats.
Ultimately, it's an applicable waterway, so in, in most respects, yes, although I think when it reaches a certain point, depending on what the issue is, other jurisdictions, including the county, get involved. But the applicable part is, is the Coast Guard, technically.
Yeah, and even our own police don't have, say, watercraft, not like Sausalito does. So, how, given the ability to enforce, I mean, what, what do you, what suggestions?
So, I've been listening to all of this and wanted to maybe offer some greater context of why this exists, which I have pieced together as best I can in looking at the records we have on file and talking to folks involved. Because it's an interesting thing, first to call this document a permit. And the second thing is, the legal authority of the city, first, some of these conditions is questionable, from a pure, we are the enforcement agency. I think there's a reason you heard the term "good neighbor" used a lot. I've actually seen that in some of the literature around this agreement, and I think it was, best I can tell, an effort on the part of the city to work with the rowing association to create guidelines or a good neighbor policy to guide behavior out on the water, in light of the fact that the city offered to lease its property to the rowing association for the purpose of housing the boathouse. And so, best I could tell, the legal authority of the city is tied to the fact that when you read the lease, one of the reasons the city could ask to open up the lease and sit down with the association is if there's material behaviors that are out of context with respect to the intention of the lease. I think this is a sort of a loose effort on the part of all parties to create some general guidelines about what would be sort of some other sets of behaviors that we would want to encourage, even though we don't necessarily have a legal authority beyond that landlord-tenant agreement. Certainly, we have some greater legal authority when the properties that are being subjected to the noise are actually in Larkspur. But I think it's with intent that the folks that wrote this, wrote it pretty broad-based, very subjective. I've sat in meetings recently to talk about this agreement and, including with Mr. Zalta, and said, you know, a lot of this is subjective, and I think it's on purpose that it was written to be subjective so that hopefully, parties could kind of sit down and reach an agreement about what it is. And what we have here is that two parties can't come to agreement about what's tolerable. And the reason this agreement is here before you is because there's a material change being requested. We actually have the practice of renewing the, renewing the permit administratively unless there's some change asked. So that every, the times it's come to the council, there's either been a high volume of complaint beyond where my predecessor felt comfortable simply renewing the agreement, the permit, or, as in this case, there's a request from the association to change something in the document. Otherwise, we've renewed it administratively. And frankly, in the grand scheme of all the things we enforce, the volume of complaint on this is very, very low. And I think that's worth taking into account. It doesn't diminish the complainant's concerns, but the complainant is really one of two people that I'm aware of that have complained enough that it's reached me. And since ultimately, I'm the enforcement officer, I, I view that as significant for the, for the agreement. So, if there are other people out there who either aren't comfortable complaining or are complaining, they're complaining in a way that's not reaching the, the ultimate enforcement officer. I delegate most of the responsibilities associated with this to Mr. Whitley, the recreation director. He has not told me that they're storming the gates at his office about this either. Again, not diminishing the issues the complainants brought, but they, they seem isolated in that greater context. I have listened to Ms. Armstrong explain in detail the logistical challenges of moving through the waterway in question, and why they have to go in a single-file line, and why the turnaround occurs where it occurs. And I am satisfied that she is making the decisions that are necessary to maintain the safety of the people who are out on the waterway. And I don't think we should underscore that the city made some decision to work with the association before my time, before many of your time with the city, to essentially promote a recreation activity for youth. And a lot of these safety provisions, like megaphones, are because the ultimate concern is maintaining the health and safety of young people that we have allowed to be out on the waterway, who may not have the depth of experience to necessarily navigate safely without the guidance of someone more experienced. And we could encourage Ms. Armstrong to only hire coaches with really booming voices, but I, I know she's got some folks on her staff that are exceptional, from what I'm told, who maybe don't have booming voices. And when they need to call the attention of a young person who's on the verge of doing something very dangerous, I understand that they might want to use amplified sound to achieve that behavior before something bad happens. And so, when I've sat with Ms. Armstrong, I've found that argument very compelling as to why, from time to time, megaphones are necessary. I don't, I'm not under the impression, unless folks are just flat-out misrepresenting things, that this is a day-in, day-out, regular occurrence by any of their coaches. It's from time to time as necessary. And again, unfortunately for Mr. Zalta, my understanding is he lives across from a turnabout that's frequently used. So, he's bearing a, a brunt, I will acknowledge that, of, of behavior, because that's where a lot of things are going on. This is not an unfamiliar challenge for you as a council. You have a youth recreation activity at its core, and folks living by a youth recreational activity complain. We know that, so it's, you know, we get complaints about the football field at the high school, we get complaints about the little league field, you know, down the street from us here. That's part of the, the package, and we try our best as a city to help mitigate those problems. We have here one where I am satisfied, and I think Mr. Whitley is also satisfied, that the rowing association's doing what it can. It doesn't mean we can't always do better. But I, it's a shame, unfortunately, that this item had to come tonight and Ms. Armstrong couldn't be here, because I think if you tolerated, although she could probably give you an hour with schematics and everything to explain all this better than I can, the amount of thought she's tried to put into mitigating the problem, it's, it's significant. I don't know that there's a way to, to solve this problem as the city of Larkspur. I just don't know that there really is. Because your, your leverage is to start talking about whether or not you should have even allowed the rowing association to, to, to find a home on city property. And I don't think that's a conversation that this rises to in any way, shape, or form. And so, I think if you want to adjust these terms, that you need to keep in mind, you want to still make them in the spirit of good neighborliness, and not necessarily that the city of Larkspur's going to send enforcement officers out into unincorporated territory and try to enforce measurements, that, which would be really challenging.
Well, that was my, going to be my question. If there were enforcement issues in the unincorporated area, who is the enforcement authority?
If it's a noise issue, I'd have to call up and see if the county noise ordinance is being violated. But if it's substantially the same as ours, the ambient noise levels are going to be so high that I just doubt that they're being violated to the point that rises above, most noise ordinances I'm familiar with allow for some activity above ambient noise level. And ambient noise level on the creek is going to be fairly loud during the day.
But it would be the county who would be coming to measure those things against their, their ordinance?
If it's purely to, to determine if a behavior is violating the noise ordinance, which, again, you know, I don't, I don't know. But yes, that would ultimately be their fault.
I'm just trying to narrow the discussion to those things relevant to the agenda item.
Yeah, another complication for us, and this may be why our predecessors chose the word "permit," is permits for recreational purposes are exempt from our noise ordinance. So, in, in theory, you can't actually enforce the noise ordinance on this document because you called it a permit and the associated behaviors are exempted, so.
And who would be enforcement authority on the speed of the boats or the wake created if?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't, I don't. Again, I think it was an effort on the part of our predecessors to provide some guidelines to the association on, on what types of launches they should be purchasing and what the motors and horsepower of those launches should be, more so than it was intended to be an enforcement matter for the city. That's, that's really where it sits.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Are there other questions from the council? Councilmember Way?
Thank you, I appreciate that thorough explanation. That made a lot of sense to me as to what we're in now, so, thank you for that. And also, the clarification of who has enforcement ability about this. Enforcability.
All right, I'm going to close with public comment. Are there other, is there a discussion by the council on this item? Councilmember Morrison?
Well, I'd like to ask Kate to come back up to the mic, but you're going to put it back to the council, is that correct?
If you have, if you have a question, we could narrow it to the question, but the public comment period's closed.
Okay, great.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I do, but just a moment. Elliot?
Thank you. Excuse me. No, I just want to give you a, no, 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 I want to give you a compliment. I really appreciate when you said, "I agree," that this would be a great loss for the youngsters involved in entire rowing community. So, you know how, no, Kate, I'm going to ask you some questions. No, Elliot, you said, Kate, come on up, Elliot, I was saying. So, thank you for caring for the youth activities, because the fields in Marin County, the gymnasiums, they're fought over constantly for all the sports. We cannot have enough athletic teams for our youth to give them something to do besides just being, watching TV and on the computers, et cetera. So, appreciate that you, you support the Marin Rowing Association. You just don't appreciate the noise level and the speed of the boats.
Correct.
Okay. So, Kate, I'm going to go back to you. I know that when I see BMW motorcycles go by, I see them both discussion because they both have the helmets on and they have the, the earpiece. I know that when there's a group of people, you can do Bluetooth and you can somehow communicate with the kid. I'm just, I'm just throwing this out, I'm just educating here. There must be a sophisticated way to keep the kids safe, to communicate without using the megaphones. And let me explain, I called two families that live on the Green Bay, Bay boardwalk. They have young kids, they enjoy watching these kids, adults, on the, on the creek, but they also complained about the noise. It gets obnoxious most, during most of the, the time. So, is there something we can do with the noise level?
So, I, to my knowledge, and this is in elite level, Olympic level rowing, there is not such a device to, you, I think you can have the coach talk to the coxswain, but there isn't a way to wirelessly.
But doesn't the coxswain have, doesn't the boat?
And they have a speaker.
And how safe is that? How safe, you know, is it... So that's how he communicates to the crew?
Yeah. So the coxswain has a microphone, and there's small speakers through the boat, and they speak to the rowers and tell them, give them their instructions.
Gosh, you just think there could be a Bluetooth somehow connection from the coach. It just shocks me that there's nothing that exists.
Bluetooth has a limited distance.
And it's also a water issue?
I value the discussion, but I want to focus the council back to the agenda.
Is that it?
Thank you.
I wanted to make sure I understood that clearly. Thank you.
Would the council tolerate my interjecting?
Mr. City Manager.
To just maybe give an assurance to councilmen Morrison. Mr. Whitley and I have asked the same question many times of Ms. Armstrong, who has told me she is constantly on the lookout for that product, and that at times, they've tested some different products they had heard of. But the distance, and the speed, and the water all interfere, and they don't feel comfortable yet that there's a product that will allow them to do this consistently and safely. But she's told me she's committed to if one comes on the market, so...
Before we finish the discussion at the council, it's clear, these are just my own comments, it's clear that there's an enforcement... This is... You live outside the City of Larkspur's jurisdiction, Mr. Zalta. But I would offer, just for myself personally, that I will come and talk to you, and then I will go talk to Sandy, and see what we can do to work on the good neighbor relationship. Because I think, I'm willing to do that on my own time, because I value what you're telling us. So, given that, that's about all I can do. If other council members have ideas on what they would like to do to help, I'd be willing to let them act on their... As individuals too. But I will do that, and I think that may be all that I can do. So I hope that's helpful. With that, I'll bring this back to the council for any further discussion and action.
You know, I always find these noise things, feel like we just went through with leaf blowers, kind of difficult, because everybody has a different sense of what they feel is in position on them. So I can't say what bothers me or doesn't bother me will affect someone else a different way. I live across the street from Little League and a school. You know, I chose to live there, because I like the vibrance of having a real community there. You know, there's a sense of life there. You know, our creek, in our own general plan, also recognizes that it is a recreational facility, you know, or it's used for recreational purposes. So, I'm not going to discount or diminish, you know, what the neighbors feel about the noise. All I'm trying to do is figure out, okay, what's a reasonable balance? And I think some of the things that the council has suggested about going back and looking at the possibility of using amplified sound only when, you know, needed, which means when there's a safety issue involved, you know, something that probably needs to be reviewed as a policy issue. But by and large, I'm fine with, you know, the efforts that Marin Rowing has made, you know, in the past. I just can't address the individual isolated, or whether they're isolated or not, you know, whatever the complainant's pattern of feeling like there are violations. And, you know, as it was suggested already, which is why I asked the question, it's really out of our jurisdiction. You know, if we don't renew the lease with Marin Rowing, for example, then the imposition will be that they just bring the boats in on trailer, and they launch it down at the Larkspur Seabase. But the activity is going to keep going on. You know, so I think, again, the best way to approach this is, you know, let's just make sure everyone's being a good neighbor, but also finding that there's a reasonable balance. Emphasize on reasonable.
Other comments, discussion? I believe the city manager gave us very good information this evening. And I think the brunt of this is a landlord-tenant, or lease-relationship. And as I say, and I agree with you, councilmember Chu, we should do everything we can to help the good neighbor relationship along. So I'll follow up with you, Mr. Zalta, and I'll come visit your property at the times that you think most impacts are being generated, and then I'll do my best to help...
Right after a stressful day at work.
Foster communications. It'll be... I assure you, I'll be ending the same stressful day. But I'll look forward to talking to you further. Councilmember Wayne?
So I'm comfortable moving... Well, this is a business item, so we don't have a resolution. But I'm comfortable with the staff's recommendation of the revision to the permit conditions of the Marin Rowing Association, condition number three, which will allow evening activities to be extended till 6:30 after this conversation.
A second. There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I really like what Mr. Holmes said. Six thirty... So are these summer times? Like wintertime, it does get dark, and that would be a little dangerous. So are these just summertime's? Kate?
We row in the morning in the dark in the winter, and we row in the evening in the dark in the winter. We have lights. We have legal lighting on the boats for the first hour in the morning. It's dark. And in the evening, that happens as well.
So it's been going on?
Yeah.
All right. I will go ahead and second.
There's been... Councilmember Chu seconded the motion.
Oh.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. And I'll get your telephone number, and I'll give you mine, and we'll follow up.
Serve coffee.
Yeah, coffee. Yeah, coffee. Coffee at the end of the day, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for everybody's thoughtful comments this evening.
Hi, Kate.
Now we'll move back to the public hearings. We'll open the public hearing, item 7.1A, fiscal year 2017-18 budget.
Can you alt-tab? This mouse is too temperamental.
I would just use alt-tab to go into the...
You can do alt-tab again.
Thank you for your patience, everybody.
Okay.
Maybe have a staff report. Thank you, Elliot. Be in touch.
Can you do that extend thing again? I think it was F1.
What are you doing? What are you doing?
There it is.
Yeah, I think you don't.
You might end up with the county board of supervisors.
It's a theme with me.
You are a jazz.
Technology doesn't love you.
You've got to find humor, right?
Right.
You've got to find humor.
Yeah.
Is it on the desktop?
Yeah, it's on the desktop.
You can still not extend that.
Well, before we begin, councilmember Morrison had brought it to our attention. This is actually really lovely to hear, because there is an error that I can fix before we go to adoption and before I print the final books. But under the sales tax, our current rate is not 9%. It changed January of '17, and it dropped down to 8.750. So I appreciate it. One that tells me that it's being read and looked at, so...
It's so easy to read.
The error in question, it's the second page of the section called Key Revenue and Expenditure Assumptions. So on January 1st, the state gave up a quarter cent in sales tax. It expired because Prop 30 came off the books, which was a 2012 proposition to support schools.
These are like we're all discussing.
Okay. So that's the live mess.
All right, let's roll.
Hey.
Be very careful with it.
Well, good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. We are bringing you back the balanced budget for consideration of your adoption tonight. So this is a general fund proposed budget review. We do have a few themes. We're keeping it short, seeing that we have seen this before. We have our... Going through our budget presentation. And then we also have, of course, we need to bring back up the challenges that our budget continually faces. Our proposed general fund budget, we're projecting revenues of 16.4. We're also projecting expenditures to be 16.4, thus the balanced budget. This is inclusive of our MOU increases that will be effective July 1st of $83,000. The groups that make that up are the LMEA at 46.5 confidential unit. There are two, and there's two little dollar marks there still, at 4.5, and our management at 32. The restoring of the fire department at $148,000. That includes the fire marshal position. Last year, it was budgeted at a .5 FTE, and this year, it's a full one. Dad, do you want to add anything more to this?
I just want to note that what we mean by restored fire department is, we've been working to restore capacity in the fire department to provide the full breadth of fire prevention services as part of cooperating with Corte Madera. This brings the budget to what we estimate is necessary for the new agency. So we have sufficient dollars in this budget to support the new JPA.
This is a favorite slide of mine. It's just a snapshot of the general fund in general. It shows actual, from a year ago, and then a budget, and it compares the budget to budget. It also shows the revenues, leisure expenditures, that the transfers being on the bottom, very much so like a financial statement would as well. Quickly, we have gone through, we have, I think I got brave this year and really went with the recommendation on the property tax from the county. I've been very, very conservative. I'm still very conservative. But they are, as I had said in the past, you know, their projections have been right on the mark. So I got a little raver this year, because we keep raising it mid-year, and hopefully this year, we can skip that step. We also have our, the sales tax that has been doing very well. We're, of course, we're still monitoring it for the quarter cent that we gained from the ending of the triple flip. So we'll keep an eye on that one, and any adjustments we can go through mid-year as well. For the most part, everything else is pretty flat. All of the departments have come in with, you know, flat line items, and most of the increases have resulted in salary and benefit pieces from the new MOUs that'll be in place in July. We also have the fire truck that's in the debt service piece, and I think that that's going to be coming, is going to be here in person in the next couple of months, I think, from what...
Yep, next two months.
So, all in all, we have a small surplus of $2,000 at the end. Pretty much balanced. You want to add anything?
No.
Pictures tell the story. The general fund revenue. We have, most of our, we're heavy property tax that covers our, and sales tax, to cover our expenditures, with franchise fees falling in as a close third from that. Again, the permitting process for the planning and building continues to be strong, and we'll continue to monitor their activities too. We had, I've been very conservative. Planning Director Toff had said that they thought they would start slowing down last year or this year, so... But we're not. Here we go. Expenditures for the general fund, that just shows all the departments as normal. It would be public safety showing the two largest pieces of the pie, with all of the other departments supporting... There is a delay. Hang on. Can we go back?
Can you get it to me?
It's...
Why don't you bring the laptop up to me?
There we go. Okay, there we go. Okay, the beginning of the challenges for the general fund. The biggest one is going to be our pension costs from Cal-Purs. As we've talked about before, we've had the discount rate is going to be decreased, which is going to increase our contribution rates. And it's going to be starting in the 1819 year. They're going to have a phase in to reduce their discount rate, as it shows in the tables, to in the 1819 to 7.73. The next following year, to the 7.25, and then in 2021, to the 21 points, or to the 7%. I went to the conference, like, in January, the CMSFMO conference, and I went and talked to Purz about this. We also got a worksheet to see what our rates would be like with the discount rates. And so I have the next slides. And so I have the next slides. Sorry, we've got challenges for the OPEB. Snuck this slide in. OPEB funding is another challenge. This current year, we have scheduled for $200,000, or for the budget year, $200,000. This year, we had increased it in mid-year to 250 to be transferred to our Seabert Fund. Our ARC for 2000, at the end of 2017, our fiscal year, is 1.17 million. So in order to reach that, we had a phase in of increasing it by $100 each year to get up to about $100, $500,000 each year in 2021. So that's, we still need to keep on track on that piece of it. And then we also have the side fund loan payment to discuss, too. That has not been incorporated in this budget is going to the OPEB, because OPEB is in the pension fund with the unfunded liabilities at PERS is kind of eating up the extras that we were going to put to OPEB. I don't know, Dan, you want to say anything more at this?
So it's in the written report. Councilmembers, you'll recall, three budget cycles ago, we anticipated a general increase to begin and a trend line to go upward with our revenues. So our thought was that we would be able to capture that increased revenues, not program it into operations, but program it to address OPEB and repaying the side phone, fund, loan repayment from the general fund back to the bridge fund. That was our goal, good plan, until the CalPERS increases began, when they lowered the discount rate and they went to normalize. I know we're going to get in the weeds real quick, but they went to make adjustments the way they approached billing the employers. And as a result, that, those changes from PERS have added, as Kathy showed you, substantially to our CalPERS bill and has eaten up that increase in revenues that we enjoyed. So what we're left with this year is about $200,000 to decide how to spend on these two competing interests, the OPEB trust and the side fund loan repayment. The budget that we're presenting here recommends putting the $200,000 into the OPEB trust and then waiting to see if there are any excess revenues at the end of the fiscal year that can be applied to the side fund loan repayment.
We did, just a short question. We did that last year. To what extent?
So last year, we budgeted for $250,000 to be.
We budgeted $200,000 and we increased it mid-year to.
Sorry. We budgeted 200, so we did exactly the same thing last year, and then mid-year, we did add $50,000 to the OPEB. To the OPEB, and then we're going to bring you a recommendation for a side fund payment based on any excess revenues when we close the books on fiscal year 167.
Okay.
So we're essentially recommending the same path this year.
Okay. Now the slides. Now, this slide is for miscellaneous and safety groups. We have, it's the normal cost. The normal cost would be our percent for our covered payroll, and then the AUL, the unfunded accrued liability as, cost as well. They're combined. And you can see that they kind of ramp up quite quickly. The, hers is ramping up. They have a five-year ramp-up period and a five-year down, down ramp period as well for, to cover the AUL costs. So you can see that it kind of rises very quickly. The little tiny boxes on the bottom are our PEPRA. So there is quite a difference between the PEPRA plans and the regular miscellaneous and safety tier-one plans.
So for the benefit of anyone who's watching the presentation and wondering what all the acronyms actually mean, so the blue bar are employees, non-safety employees of the city who have been here for a while, before pension reform, or newer non-safety employees who were in the pension system somewhere else. They're captured in the blue bar. And then the orange, red bar, I'm not sure what color that actually is supposed to be.
Orange.
Orange. So that's your non, that's your safety personnel who have been here for a while or transferred to us. So those are referred to in the literature as classic employees. Sometimes you hear that term. And then these smaller boxes that we're showing on the right, those are our employees in miscellaneous gray and kind of a golden for safety that we've hired since pension reform came into place. So that's, that's what those four bars are when you translate them into people. It'd be understandable that right now, we'd still have a heavy load of classic employees.
Pulling out the normal, the percent of cost of normal payroll and just looking at the unfunded liability, this is what the, as Dan had said, the classic employees would look like. Oh. Thank you. So again, you can see both the miscellaneous and the safety, they're running very close together, but they are ramping up quite steep in, in, up to, this is only going to year 2023. Our amortization for the unfunded liability goes to 2046, 2046. And as we have learned with PERS, any unfunded liability keeps getting added to that amortization schedule each year. So it could be not as pretty as this picture. It could continually be ramping up and getting, looking a lot worse than it is now that we're projecting. So there are some really steep increases that, you know, we need to start looking at and planning for now. Questions? Comments? This is going to just go through the pension costs of where we are for our budget for 1718. You know, our PERS cost is about 1.2 million a year. So you have your employer, that we were just talking about, our current employer cost, that's the covered payroll, and then plus what they're calling the lump sum is the unfunded liability. Where we have, the percentages that we have for the miscellaneous and the safety, you know, miscellaneous is about 10% to covered payroll, and your safety is at 19. Your lump sum payment this year went up to 675, which was, you know, again, that's, this is not even counting the lowering of the discount rate yet. Miscellaneous plan, this is giving you an idea of what the AULs, well, the unfunded liabilities will look like going through. So you can see substantial increases throughout the years. So I just gave a kind of up to about six years. And on the safety side, again, it starts jumping quite heavily in the year 2022. We're reaching just in a lump sum about, you know, $900,000. It could reach much larger than that, and that's just. Questions? And that's not only debt that we need to talk about. We also have debt, other debt payments. We have RDL leases, and it's, it is wonderful to have good technology and when up and running.
Evidence of the contrary.
[laughing] Well, we do now have our own fire, you know, we have our own wireless connection through, behind firewall, which is great. But we did go out and get some technology upgrades when I first came, and I can testify that I love my little laptop. We also have a side fund, bridge fund, that we realize that this is up for discussion towards the end, when we close the books, to see what we can put towards that, or if that's what council choose. We also have the loan project, which is the, what we call the corporate loan project that we're paying off each year, and the mirror bonds for the emergency broadcast. And then new one is the synthetic fields. Other post benefits, OPEB. We are doing a pay-as-you-go for, so for our current retirees, it's about $350,000 a year for the pay-as-you-go. We do have an aging workforce. And then we opened up a separate fund, a trust fund to, that is where I'm pre-funding, not as the pay-as-we-go, but we're pre-funding through Seabert and keeping the, the reimbursement checks are coming through from another company called Mid-America to the retirees. So we actually have two different OPEB funds for the city. So currently, we are budgeted at 250 to send to OPEB this year. In fact, I need to do that before the end of June 30. And our goal is to reach 500,000 or 600,000 annually to pre-fund into Seabert for our up-and-coming retirees. So our challenges, our biggest, some of our biggest challenges are going to be mentioning, monitoring and managing pension costs, meeting the OPEB liability obligations, and we're going, and I think Mark Wong from Mays is here. He's going to talk a little bit about some upcoming GASP's, which is going to change how we are presenting our OPEB on our books. We're also having, increasing employee costs. That's a normal. And our maintenance on our infrastructure is ongoing, as always. And then, of course, our unfunded insurance and equipment funds, repaying the bridge fund, those are all challenges that we need to meet somehow. My short-term financial plan, as we continue to monitor, control on a cash base and plan for current, plan for future years. We also have, you know, a long-term plan is expenditure control, establishing revenues and revenue enhancements to help with some of these. And that brings us to questions.
Questions from the council?
Once again, nice job.
Thank you.
Questions from members of the public? All right. Does that complete the staff report?
It does.
All right.
It does.
Are there members of the, of the public that would like to make a comment on this agenda item? I'll bring it back, I'll close the, the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion. Councilmember Way?
Thank you, Kathy, once again, for a very thorough analysis of this. And just to make sure the community knows, we've been talking about this budget now for, since April. So this is what, our fifth meeting? Yeah, fifth meeting. So this is really the synopsis, which we've had lots of opportunity to ask questions. So if it sounds like we're not asking lots of questions now, it's, it's very clear that you're really trying to help us understand what our financial limitations are, and I appreciate that. Can you elaborate any further on sort of the PERS conversation? Do we have, do any cities have any control over any of that? Or do you just?
Maybe I should do it.
Keep it, keep it above, you know?
The, no city has control in the sense that we all have contracts with PERS and have to make these payments. And one city currently has stopped making payments, and PERS promptly kicked all of their retirees out of the pension system.
Hmm, not a good idea.
So it's gotten ugly very fast, and that's a little tiny town up in the, in the mountains. Nobody on a larger scale has done that yet. I think that what cities are trying to do now, in addition to just coping with the problem, is trying to figure out ways to strategize to fund the long term in, without just relying on PERS telling you, pay me this much money. So there are vehicles out there for cities that maybe have the ability to park some excess revenues, or even to do some pass-through on their payment structures, that I'm aware of, that cities are starting to look at, where the goal is to assume the discount rate's going to get lowered again, and then start to try to capture investment returns in, in the interim that might at least increase the amount of money you can apply toward your payments. So in some respects, that's similar to the OPEB trust vehicle, although I think cities are looking at maybe something a little more aggressive to try to keep pace with where PERS is and where they're going. But right now, we are at the mercy of this big 800-pound gorilla and trying our best to just cope with it. And we have it bad, but we're, we're in this boat with hundreds of cities, hundreds, if not thousands, of school districts who are dealing with this, not just with PERS, but with STIRS, which is the teachers' pension program. So it's not just us, and so that, I think global solutions, statewide solutions are really the only way. Larkspur's not going to solve this one.
Yeah. Thank you for that. How about OPEB?
Yeah, so OPEB, and just in case we forgot to say, other post-employment benefits, which in Larkspur's entirely our retiring medical program. With OPEB, we, you've been assertive in reducing the long-term risk there by lowering the benefit for new hires. So we have a different program, and I shouldn't say lowering. By lowering, I mean the way we fund it, the costs are changed. So new hires get a guarant, they get a commitment that they will have access to medical care in retirement, and they receive a minimum amount from the city in the future when they retire. And then what we do while they're working is we contribute money into an investment account that they can use to then help toward their premiums. So it's a, what would be called a hybrid or blended plan of defined benefit and defined contribution, much more typical, I think, of what you see in the broader world of where there are retiring medical programs. We now are doing that. So that, over time, is going to start to flatten out that liability curve to some degree, but that, that flattening's still off in the future, so we need to keep hammering away best we can. OPEB is a, is a different deal because the contracts between the city and its employees, there's not a third party. There's no PERS forcing it upon you. We've made that contractual commitment and that obligation. So it's a different relationship. Doesn't make it any less, but it's a different relationship.
Okay. Kathy, thank you.
Other council discussion? We have a series of resolutions before us.
It may be helpful, given there's a series, as you identify the resolution, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to just quickly say what it is you're doing with that resolution. And then you'll need a vote on each one.
Shall we move down the list? All right, the first one is Resolution Number 38-17.
So this is to adopt the city's investment policy. You visit your policy chair. We aren't proposing any changes to the current investment policy.
Is there a motion on Resolution 38-17?
I'll make that motion. Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The next is Resolution Number 39-17.
So the California Constitution requires you to set an appropriation limit for the year. That's the most money that can be appropriated legally in that fiscal year, and so that this resolution would establish it for next fiscal year.
Is there any further discussion on this resolution? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll move Resolution Number 39-17.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. The next is Resolution Number 40-17.
This is to adopt the general fund reserve policy for the coming fiscal year. We're proposing no changes from the existing general fund reserve policy.
Any further discussion on Resolution 40-17? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll move Resolution Number 40-17.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number, Resolution Number 41-17.
So this would adopt the salary ranges for all of the positions in Larkspur at the time of adoption. It's a required step by CalPERS. At the time of adoption, it's a required step by CalPERS each year. So all of the ranges you see indicated here are up to date and include changes you've authorized during the past fiscal year.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move to adopt Resolution 41-17.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Resolution number 42-17.
So this is the annual decision by the council about the repayment terms from the general fund to the bridge fund. In addition to approving the resolution, we're recommending that as part of your motion, you state that you want the staff to return at the end of the close of the fiscal year and report if there are any excess revenues we would recommend be used because at this time, we're not proposing any payments during the fiscal year.
Move to adopt Resolution 42-17 and have staff bring it back for discussion, see if there are excess revenues.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Resolution number 43-17.
So this resolution authorizes the five-year CIP program. What it's doing is authorizing the funding for the program as a lump sum authorization.
Any discussion? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution number 43-17.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Resolution number 44-17.
And this is the big one? This would adopt the budget.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on Resolution number 44-17?
Twenty-one million.
If not, I'll take a motion.
Move to adopt Resolution 44-17, or adopt budget for fiscal year 1718.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. We acknowledge and appreciate all the hard work by city staff.
Thank you, Kathy.
To make this work. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Amazing amount of work that has gone into that. We value expertise very much. The next item on the agenda is Item 7.1B, the capital improvement program. May we have a staff report?
So as Mr. Skinner, your Public Works Director, comes to give a brief presentation, just for clarification, what you passed as a resolution was the lump sum funding of the entire capital improvement program. Individual projects and their funding and contracting still comes to you throughout the fiscal year. So Mr. Skinner's going to give you a presentation and an overview, as he did at the last meeting, of what you can anticipate will come to you throughout the fiscal year.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. So we have a recap tonight of the capital, the proposed capital improvement program for fiscal year 1718. And here's just a brief summary of where we've been and how we got here tonight. So this is not the first time folks have seen this. We did start with a preview during a budget presentation, April 19. And then we took the proposed Parks and Recs projects to the Parks and Rec Commission earlier this year and then went to the planning commission for a general plan conformity hearing. And then we had the full-length workshop at the May 17 council meeting. And so this is the formal adoption after that process. And so one of the things we talked about with the capital program is what we're trying to do is maintain and improve our infrastructure. And so just briefly, again, infrastructure, for the most part, is our streets. So our pavements and then all the appurtenances with the streets. So that's the streetlights, the striping, traffic signals, retaining walls, things like that. In addition to that, the utility that we're responsible for is the storm drain under the streets. I've got about 15 miles of storm drains, just over 32 miles of streets. And then in addition to that, our mini parks and our one regional park, as well as the various city buildings, public buildings. And so the asset that we get the most phone calls about and that's really readily visible to most people is the streets. They travel on them every day. We get a lot of phone calls about the condition of our streets. We've been doing a lot of work to maintain them, but they're still in poor condition. And poor is just not a general term. It's actually a classification of streets that are rated on a level of 0 to 100, with 0 being a really bad street and 100 being the street right after the paver has passed by and paved it. And so on average, our whole network is a 39, which is in the poor condition. And this is, you know, one of our toughest assets to maintain based on that poor level and the amount of funding it takes to maintain it and hopefully improve it. So how do we come about the projects that are in the proposed CIP? As we mentioned before, we have lots of condition studies. So as I mentioned, we've rated our pavements. We know their condition is 39. So we've looked at those. We know what condition they're in. Similarly, we have condition reports for our bridges. We've done studies in our parks, master plans before. We're in the middle now of doing a storm drain assessment. We're looking at our storm drain system to try and find out what kind of commitment it's going to take to maintain and improve that in the future. We also have various planning documents. So we've got master plans for our mini parks and for Piper Park. And this past year, council adopted a bicycle and pedestrian master plan that outlines a lot of the bicycle and pedestrian improvements throughout the city. And then from time to time, there are grant programs out there that have certain funding for certain projects. And so we look for projects to meet that grant funding criteria. What are the funding sources? So that was the needs that identify the projects. Where does the money come from? The best one is grants because it's not our money. It doesn't come out of pots that we can use for anything else. They're competitive. And some examples of grants that we've received in the past, obviously, the Bonner Bridge was one of the bigger ones. And we've had some recent grants for some improvements around schools and some crosswalks. Traditional capital project funding is gas tax, which has been around for a while. That primarily goes towards street maintenance. And then we have some other local fund sources. We have our own local Measure C sales tax that primarily has been used for roadways. The Transportation Authority of Marin has two funding sources that funnel to us through formula, Measures A and B. One is a sales tax, the other is a vehicle registration fee. And then the county also has a sales tax for park improvements. It's also called Measure A. And then we have various impact fees on permits and activities throughout the city that fund improvements to parks and streets. And then talking about Measure C. So that does generate about $1 million a year that we've been putting towards our pavement rehabilitation. It's a five-year sales tax measure, as you know. And so we planned five years' worth of pavement projects with that. Two have been completed. One has just been awarded. So probably in two to three weeks from now, you'll see the contractor in town starting to work on this year's project. And then there are two more years of projects scheduled beyond this year's. And so this is a kind of a slide of... We get a lot of questions about the paving project. And with the funding we have, we're only able to do about 3% of our streets each year, which is great for the people that live on those streets. But we get a lot of phone calls from the other percentage of the population wondering when we're going to get to their street. And so this kind of is the story of where we're at pavement-wise and the different levels of funding that would be needed to get to certain levels. What's highlighted in red there, the bottom red, is the $1.5 million. That's currently what we're spending on average a year on our paving. So that's the $1 million of Measure C roughly. And then the other half, half a million or $500,000 is gas tax and other traditional sources, Measure A. And what this chart shows is different funding levels and what it does to your PCI or that 39 condition that I showed earlier, what could happen to that based on different funding scenarios over five years. And so the 1.5, if we kept at that level, actually shows our PCI would drop a little bit. It's not... It's a good program. It's better than what we had previous to Measure C, but it's not going to get us out of that poor condition. So if you start looking at ramping up the dollars per year, there are, as far as PCI levels go, MTC recommends a PCI of 75 as a target. And one of the reasons is, once you start getting into a higher PCI, not only are your streets in better condition, but they are less costly to maintain in the long run. So we looked at a couple of scenarios based on our network of streets and the condition they're in. And we looked at a couple of PCI goals. One was 70. And we found that it would take about $5 million a year over five years to get up to an average PCI over the city of 70. If money's no object, the program recommends we spend $7.5 million a year. And then just to the point I made earlier about one of the reasons we want to get here, not only does it make our streets in better condition, reduce the number of potholes, make smoother roads out there for everybody, but it actually, once your streets get to that condition, you're able to do a lot more cost-effective treatments, maintenance-wise, on the streets. So they actually become cheaper to maintain. If we were to keep going the way we were going now, maybe get a little bit of extra money, we would keep spending about $1.8 million a year into the future. Our PCI would stay in the low 40s. We wouldn't be able to climb out of that. Whereas if we were able to spend that money and get the PCI up to about a 70, we could then spend less than $1 million a year maintaining our roads at that level, 70. And then this is kind of the chart that explains that. It's kind of hard to read, but this is the life of a pavement. And so, starting with when the street is paved, there's a little bit of drop-off initially. But then for 10 to 15 years, the street does pretty well. And then it gets to a point when it starts to crack, water gets into the street. Once it starts to crack, it'll start to crack more, and the deterioration really accelerates over time when you get to the end of that pavement life. And unfortunately, a lot of the streets we have in the city are down and towards that end of their pavement life. And you only have limited options as far as how to treat that road. A lot of the streets, we're doing thick overlays or we're grinding out bad asphalt and putting new asphalt in. Or in some cases, we're grinding down into the dirt. We're conditioning the dirt and we're building the street up from the bottom. It's very expensive to do that, but that's what you have to do when the streets are down in that lower PCI level. Conversely, if you can get to your streets sooner, when they're just starting to crack, and you can either crack-fill them or put a seal coat or something like that on them, that's a much more cost-effective treatment method in the long run. And so what this chart here is showing is that if you can get to the streets when they're in a better condition rather than worse, you're spending your money better for your overall street network in the long run. And so a goal for a pavement program is to have your streets in this good category so that they're less expensive to maintain. And based on the funding level that we have, we would not be able to get up into that good level, up into a 70 PCI, unless we accelerated our program. Spending the $1.5 million a year currently won't get us up to 70, where we can do more cost-effective treatments on our pavement. We really need to be looking at something that would be in that $5 million range per year for a few years to get us to a point where we would be able to have a more cost-effective pavement management program overall. So overall, the capital improvement program, what it does is it takes all those needs that I talked about from those reports that we have, looks at the available pots of funding we have and kind of meshes the two together and works on a plan, focusing on the current fiscal... Or the next fiscal year, even though it does look out five years into the future and we try to plan for some future projects, it only appropriates money for the current or the upcoming fiscal year. And so this is the same list that we provided last time, broken down into new projects and projects that have been in the capital plan before that are continuing. They're either projects that are unfinished or they're projects that need additional funding added to them. So this is a list of new projects. We have one new building project, and that's improvements to the fire station. And we're only funding the first phase of that, which is some investigative work to try and quantify the improvements that would be required at the Green Bay Fire Station. Then there are four parks projects proposed. And again, other than the Piper Park tennis courts, all of these are just first phases of future work. So starting a project to have conforming signs at our mini parks, looking at improvements at Niven Park, and then looking at doing improvements to the second volleyball court. So those projects will kick off next fiscal year and then will be scheduled for construction in the following fiscal year. The one park project that's proposed to be constructed in the coming year is the Piper Park tennis courts. And so we did receive some feedback at the last meeting about working with the users of the tennis courts. And so we will be undertaking that effort as one of the first exercises in this project to make sure that we're not spending money on something that maybe will get resurfaced or repurposed in a few years. So we're still proposing the project the same in the capital plan, but we will be doing some outreach as part of the first phase of that project.
Will any of these, if any of these, require additional environmental review or analysis?
So every capital project that we do will require some sort of environmental analysis. Typically, there are categorical exclusions or exemptions for most of the projects. And so when we go out, depending on the scope and size of the project, if it comes to council, when we do the preliminary scoping of the project and we're able to determine what components of the project are going to be, we'll do that environmental analysis. On the more complicated ones, we'll consult with our planning director. But typically for, I would say about 95% of these projects are going to be categorical exemptions that then get filed with the county.
But the amounts identified here would be subject to that completion of that analysis?
Yeah. So anything that's in the capital improvement plan that's a project as defined by SEQA requires that analysis, correct?
So any mitigations resulting from that would be added to these numbers?
Yeah. If there are any... If there's anything, we have preliminary looked at these and scoped them. And the costs that are here are all-inclusive costs based on our preliminary analysis of that project. So it includes staff time, construction management time. Those costs would be amended if we get through the preliminary process and it's identified that there's any permitting or mitigations or anything like that that are required.
Thanks.
So that's it for the parks projects. And so we do have three new street projects. One is not technically new. It's mitigation for the Arroyo Halone or the Doherty Bridge that's just been split into its own separate project this year per Caltrans. And then Doherty Drive Rule 28 undergrounding is a proposed new project that will have project development this year, the actual construction or the undergrounding of those utilities. It will be a few years off. That's based on PG&E's schedule. And then the last project is next year's local streets pavement, which according to our plan would be the Riviera Circle neighborhood. And so as we get underway with this year's construction project, we're starting now to work on next year's, the preliminary phases. So we'll be reaching out to the residents and the utility companies as part of the first efforts to start the project development for paving that neighborhood next year. And then the next slides, these are the ongoing projects. So I won't go into these in a lot of detail. These are ones you've seen before. I'll just highlight some of the ones that have some of the bigger expenditures. And so what's highlighted in the second red column here is the new money. A lot of these projects have carryover funds. The last column is the total project cost, which is not necessarily the carryover plus this year because some of these projects are multi-year projects that will carry on into the future. But the last column is intended to give the cost of the project as a whole. It doesn't reflect how much has been allocated to date. Obviously, our bigger project is a Bonner Bridge replacement. And so if that goes out to bid again this fiscal year, we will need to fund the first... The first set of contractor invoices that take us through this coming fiscal year. And so we've estimated that based on some work we did previously on how much work they would do. And that's how much is requested in this budget. And then the amounts for the future years would be added to subsequent capital improvement programs. We're adding... Proposing to add another $100,000 for our storm drain project. And this is the project that is funding our storm drain master plan and also funds some miscellaneous smaller-type drainage improvements throughout the city. One of our bigger drainage improvement projects is the Cordillao Storm Drain, which is actually on Vila Paz, but that's the name of the project. So we're proposing adding money this year to fully fund that project based on the bids that we got when we advertised last year and couldn't award it because it came in over the estimate.
Well, Mr. Skinner's advancing. I just wanted to underscore a point we've been trying to make throughout these budget hearings about cash flow and maintaining money. The estimate that he's showing is that, over the course of the first year of the bridge project, as much as $4 million, it could be extended out by the city. Now, the state will be reimbursing us throughout the process, but that's what we're talking about when there's a need for us to be managing our cash flow very carefully. there's a need for us to be managing our cash flow very carefully.
Okay. And on the second slide, the biggest allocation here is for the Bonner Bridge mitigation projects, which are the sister project of the Bonner Bridge. As soon as that project is finalized and goes out to bid, we'll be finalizing the design for all the mitigation projects. And so, we anticipate that that will probably be later in the fiscal year next year, or maybe the start of the year after. But certainly, if we're going to finalize that and put it out to bid, we want to fund it in the fiscal year that it goes out to bid in. And so, again, that has the same funding formula as the bridge, which for construction is just over 88% is paid for by the federal bridge grant, and then just over 11% comes out of our bridge fund. So that's the list of projects. I should have mentioned before I started that there's a copy of the handout at the back table if anybody wanted to follow along, but late now. But, so this last slide is a collection of, on our website, we have project fact sheets for all of the projects I went over, both the new projects and the carryover projects. And so, these were posted to the Public Works website after the last workshop in draft format, and they're up there on the Public Works website for anybody who wants to take a closer look at our projects. There's more detail on those fact sheets than, is in the table that I presented tonight. So with that, I'm available for any feedback or questions.
Questions of Julian from council?
I do, Julian. It's
Councilwoman Morris.
Personal here. Hillview Gardens, the storm drain. From what I understand, I thought the streets were going to be repaved in Hillview. All the streets?
So, yes, as far as the paving program goes, the next streets that are programmed to be paved is Riviera next summer, and then the next neighborhood after that, per the five-year, original five-year plan was Hillview. And so, we're going to be monitoring the progress on the bridge project, because the bridge project is tied to Hillview in that the new storm drains, the Hillview Storm Drain Project, will be installing storm drains that connect to the pump station on the Bonner Bridge Project. So, the timing of that project is going to be a little trickier than just a normal utility project, in that, at this point, we haven't gone out to bid with the Bonner Bridge Project, so we don't know the timing certain of when that pump station will be installed. Ideally, the sequence is the pump station goes in first, then the storm drain pipes go in, and then we pave the street. And so, there is, there is the potential that, depending on the timing of the bridge project and where that pump station falls in the contractor's three-to-four-year construction program, that we may have to come up with some alternate solutions. We will be, the preliminary engineering for Hillview Storm Drain is already funded. So, one of the tasks that the engineer will be looking at is, is there a way to install the storm drains in the Hillview neighborhood and provide a temporary outlet to the creek before the pump station is built, such that we could advance that project and it's not dependent on the actual pump station being there? So that's something that we're aware of, based on the schedule of where the bridge is, that it may have an effect on the Hillview Storm Drain Project, which then has an effect on the paving of the streets, because obviously we don't want to pave the streets until we put the storm drains in.
Of course.
So, we'll be making that evaluation as we move forward. It may be if there's no way to stage the pipes without the pump station, that we may look at paving half of Hillview and then paving the other half when we, after we've come back and done the storm drain pipes. But until somebody looks at all of those different scenarios, I can't really commit to what that schedule would be at this time.
Okay. And I'm okay with that, but there's two committees being formed right now. One is to change the laterals when the streets are pulled. So each household is, are thinking of getting one contractor do it all to lower the price. And secondly, we're thinking about putting the telephone wires under the ground. So, there's two committees being formed.
Okay. So I would say, based on the information we have right now, the earliest that Hillview would be paved is the summer of 2019.
Great. I'm not part of those committees, by the way.
Other questions of Julian on this item? The council's just hearing this report tonight, so there's, is there an action?
That's right. The action was the authorization in the previous item.
Forty-three dash seventeen.
That's right.
Julian, great job.
All right. Thank you, Julian.
You got lots ahead of you, my friend.
Appreciate your thorough presentation, and I'm sure those viewing, are there members of the public who would like to comment on this item?
James Holm, Medrone Avenue. Three items I have a bit of concern about with respect to the capital improvement plan. Number, I, going down the list here of the handout, which you may mean I've gotten, number two is mini-park signs, $10,000 this year, total estimated project cost $100,000, uniform signs. I really question the necessity for that. I mean, I, I'm all for keeping up our signs repaired, as the Public Works Director can attest, but I just wonder whether that's a good use of our Measure A money, and whether there might be some other alternatives. So I, and whether or not the public might look at that and say, gee, $10,000 to $100,000 just to make the signs uniform. The signs are fine, I think. Number two, the second concern I have is item 15 on the list, which is Magnolia ADA Improvements, $200,000. My concern here is that it comes out of the vehicle impact fee, and yet, the changes being made do not relate in any respect to the impact of vehicles, certainly not garbage, garbage trucks and otherwise. I know that there's an occasional argument made that, that ADA improvements can be a necessary prerequisite to a major repaving, but there is no major repaving planned for Magnolia in this area, so that that theory does not apply to the particular facts here. I believe that vehicle impact fees should be used for vehicle impact, and I think every effort should be made to try to get grants for the, for the, for ADA. And certainly, that makes sense, because if ever there was a mandate, an externally imposed mandate, it would be the ADA. My major concern, however, is I believe it's the last item on your list. It's the number 21, Magnolia-Medrone Intersection. I have real problems and concerns with this project. There are two aspects to the project. One of them, there are no problems and concerns. If you are interested, the fact sheet, the illustrated fact sheet is the last sheet on your staff report, the last illustrated report, but then you have to turn, and then the last sheet like this is the description of it, and they aren't together. But in any event, there are two parts to it. One is shiny, striping, and rectangular red flashing beacons. No problems with that. However, the Heritage Board did request that a less industrial look be used. So I mention that on behalf of the Heritage Board, they didn't ask me that, but I just conveyed that. But, but that, that concept is not a problem. The concern I have is the bulbouts, including curb bulbouts. Those are simply referred to on the illustration as other minor intersection modifications, but the curb bulbout is in fact, and it's hard to see on your little picture here, it is a significant narrowing of the currently wide and welcoming entrance to Medrone Avenue. I strongly urge the council not to embark on any narrowing of Medrone Avenue. Medrone Avenue, the entrance to Medrone Avenue used to be narrow. It was widened to its current configuration in the 1970s. It works very, very well, and it's particularly important because cars turning in need to have room, turning into Medrone from Magnolia need to have plenty of room to wait for cars that are coming out to get through. If the cars, if, if, if cars turning in do not have, and two, two cars, sometimes three, will back up waiting for the ones to come out. If there isn't ample room for the cars to, that are turning in to wait, then there is going to be a problem. There is going to be accidents, and there are going to be backups extending into Medrone, because the turning cars will not be able to turn. So, I strongly urge the council not to narrow Medrone Avenue. I would also say, the entrance to Medrone Avenue, and I would also say that everybody I've talked to, a few people, with, for example, the lady from Medrone who spoke to you in public, in public comment, they say, that's bizarre, that that should not be done. Please do not narrow Medrone Avenue. Please keep the existing wide and practical entrance. Please keep a close watch on this project and have it brought back before the council, because just like the issue of the lane, this is a, this could have a substantial impact on the livability and the safety and the aesthetics of Medrone and Magnolia, which is a key intersection in this community. Thank you.
What would be the process of looking at this in more detail from the council?
Yeah. So, all we have to date is a grant application that was put together for the Transportation Development Act funding.
I'm referring to the Medrone.
Right.
Magnolia.
Yeah. So, all we, all we have to date is a grant application. We have not done any preliminary engineering. We engaged a consultant to come up with some concepts to obtain the grant, which primarily is for pedestrian improvements. He came up with a couple of ideas of how to implement them. One of them had an island, one of them had a curb narrowing. None of these things are set in stone. The grant basically is for pedestrian improvements at that intersection, including the rapid rectangular flashing beacon. One of the first components of that project in the next fiscal year will be a public workshop. So, the consultant will be gathering data, looking at the traffic. You know, while the aim is to improve pedestrian access through that location, we certainly don't want to do it at the expense of vehicles. We, I'm sure have all been stuck in traffic there and don't want that to get any worse. So, we're all very aware of that, and we'll be having a public workshop to explore some of the ideas and some of the components of that project, engage the feedback from the community as far as what they're in favor of for that location. And then ultimately, because it's a capital project, it will come back to the council for you to adopt the plans before it goes out to public bid. So, the public will see it in the form of a workshop, and then it will come back before the council for adoption of the project before it goes out to public bid.
I hope that's helpful information.
It is helpful. The, the little, the little draw, not the drawing, but the little, what you would call it here, the little description, colored description says, crosswalk improvements have been identified in bike and pedestrian plans in St. Luke's Schools meeting. So, I mean, I know I wasn't a member of those meetings, and I could certainly have some, a number of points to make and experience based on a lifetime of acquaintance with that particular section. There's a very, very simple way to solve the, the one, the crosswalk in Medrone Avenue. It's too close to Magnolia. It should be cut back about, it should be recessed about 10, 15 feet, and then it would be shortened, and it would be a lot safer. This crosswalk didn't even used to be here. There's a whole story connected with that. I won't go into it, but, but this crosswalk that is close to Probert's, or, or, or what is it now? What do they call it? Anyway, the old house. They change it so often.
Well, we'll look forward to your thoughtful comments at the workshop.
Yeah. I'll, please do, and I appreciate the council taking, keeping a close eye on what could be a potentially controversial.
I care about this particular location a great deal, so I share your concern. Other members of the public?
This capital improvement program is fully multimodal. Everyone gets something. I'm a big supporter of Measure C. I want my drivers in Larksburg to have a smooth ride, and some of the road surfaces now are literally dangerous for cyclists and pedestrians. Other concepts are still to be worked out in detail. That will happen over time as they are focused on with public comment and the advice and expertise of DPW. I, that includes Magnolia and Medrone. Livability, safety, and aesthetics are much in the eye of the beholder. DPW can advise on safety. It's a big safety routes to schools issue. When, when the workshop is had, and there are the concept drawings, then we can all talk about it more intelligently. For tonight, this is an excellent program in its inclusiveness and flexibility, and I don't understand why the city council just doesn't approve it tonight and let DPW get on with his job.
We have. Thank you for your comments. All right. Other public comment on this item? Thank you very much, and great job, staff. Really appreciate all your hard work on this. And we recognize the challenges as well. Next item on the agenda is item 8.2, to receive and acknowledge the annual fiscal year 2015-16 audit of the City of Larksburg Basic Financial Statements. Thank you very much for your patience, Mr. Wong. We recognize you're here to help us.
Just as brief introduction, Mark Wong from Mays Associates is here. And while he's making the presentation, one of the things we've appreciated working with Mays is they regularly rotate the actual audit team that comes in, so we get a fresh take each year. So, thank you, Mr. Wong, for returning, and we did enjoy getting to see some new staff people this year from Mays. Turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Wong from Mays and Associates. We are the independent auditors for the City of Larksburg, and I'm the engagement partner for the audit. So, basically, tonight, I'm going to talk about the 2016 audit of financial statements. So, in, I think, in your agenda package, there is a basic financial statements. And so, I'm going to go just right ahead and jump to, basically, I'm going to start on page one. So, if you look at page one to page three, so basically, that's the work of, that's the audit results from Mays and Associates. So, basically, on page one, if you look at the second section where it says management's responsibility for the financial statements, every year, and as auditors, we kind of just quickly go through it for a couple of seconds. So basically, management, so basically, Kathy, we work with Kathy, and Kathy and finance departments is responsible for the preparation and the presentation of the financial statements. So what we do is Kathy will provide us the general ledger, and we assist the city in getting the financial report together. And at the same time, we also, and then with the GL data, we, as auditors, what we do is we audit the financial information provided to us. On page two is our opinion. So basically, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly stated. It means that, in our language, we call it unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. So, and that's the highest opinion you can get. And emphasis of matter, the second section of page two, based, the city implemented GASB 72 governmental accounting standards, statement number 72, fair value of, fair value measurements. So base, it didn't, it basically, it's a standard on how, how basically, most investments and investment should be presented and measured. So, there's no material impact for the city. The main thing that I wanted to, on page five, so if you look at page five, page five is the management discussion and analysis. So again, that's prepared by Kathy. And what we do as auditors, we, so-called, we, we do limited procedures on it, and I want to point it out because it's a really good, the management discussion and that analysis is a good tool for a reader and for the council to look at it. That's, basically, it contains, it talks about the overall financial results and performance of the city. And, but more importantly, it also provides you a comparative information from prior year. So, if you look at page seven, so on page seven, there's a table, there's a table in the middle of it called statement of table in the middle of it called statement of, uh, statement net position as of June 30, 2016. You see that there are two columns there between 15, uh, fiscal year 15, 16 and fiscal year 14, 15. And, and the last column, you'll see a increase or decrease. So basically, you, uh, a reader can use that to see a, a general, uh, performance of these, uh, of, of the city. So if you look at it, basically, you can, if you look at the last column, you can see that assets, uh, assets increased by eight million and that's basic, that's attributed generally to all the, um, fixed assets or, or it's now called capital assets that, that the city, uh, for fiscal year 16. So that's the main increase. And in terms of liabilities, liabilities all increased by 2.5 million and, and, uh, the two biggest increase are in pension liability and in OPEP liability. And I think, um, the finance director has already alerted, uh, the council and talked about, you know, in future years, uh, those liability will probably in, in the, in the next five, five years, it will probably, uh, increase. So, uh, okay, and, um, so I'm going to turn over to page 17. So on page 17, uh, on page 17, uh, it's statement of activities. So basically that is, uh, you look at it and it basically, uh, shows the performance of the city as a whole. So, and it's, um, what, uh, what accountants call it as, uh, basically this is a full cruel accounting. So it takes into, it, it, it takes into, uh, into effect of things like, uh, depreciation, which are non-cash. So, and in it, you, if you look at the third last line, change in net position, it was 6.8 million and which is a positive increase in net position, which is, which is a good, good performance. And again, most of it, I, uh, most, most of that change in net position, uh, okay, you look at, um, what else? On page 22, so on page 22, um, on page 22, under governmental funds, if you look at, on page 22, uh, the highlight of it, I, I want to talk about general fund. So again, on general fund, if, that, if you look at general fund, general fund, uh, towards at the bottom of it where you see net change in fund balances, it was, it's a positive 1.1.8, 1.9 million dollars. So again, it's a positive, uh, uh, increase in fund balance. So, so, um, that's a good result. So having said that, uh, I just want to basically, uh, repeat what Cathy had, had sort of brought up, um, in the budget. So basically, um, in fiscal year 18, so right now, uh, you know, fiscal year 18, there is a new, uh, accounting standard, new, new GASB coming up. It's called 75, which is for OPEP, so which is for retiree healthcare. So basically, the measurement method and for reporting on the financial statements, they will change it. Uh, currently it's under GAS, uh, currently it's under GASB 45, so it's going to be updated. Fiscal year 18, it's going to be 75. So basically, the way of reporting and the way of measuring the expenses and liability will be similar to pension. So, and so the expectation, uh, is that the liability will, will increase, uh, you know, it will, it will be a very material increase. So if you look at page, um, if you look at page 68, I believe. Correct, if you look at page 68. So on page 68, uh, at the second table, you can see a column that's called unfunded actuarial accrued liability and this is for, and this is for OPEP. So, uh, and when, during the last valuation date, which was on July 1, 2013, the, the liability is 12 million. So, uh, when it comes fiscal year 18, uh, the actuary will have to go back and basically they have to recalculate again. It, it is going to be, um, the potential increase in liability, sorry, the potential , uh, reporting in the city's financial statements will be, uh, I want to say it's most likely will be at least 12 million. Right now, it's, uh, right now on page 16, it's, it's 4 million right now. So, uh, basically, I just, I think, uh, we want, uh, you know, the council to be, uh, aware of that, so. Oh, okay, so.
So 12 million when, what, what do you?
So, okay, so on page 68 at the last, uh, at the very last line.
Yes.
And then, uh, one, two, three, on the fourth column, you see 12.3 million, sorry, 12.3 million. So that is, uh, so-called a unfunded actuarial liability. So it's, the measuring is, it's quite diff, it's, it's different from, um, it's different from the measurement under GASB 75 that will be effective next year. But it's a, it's sort of, it, but it's sort of, it's a good estimate to, um, it's, it's a rough estimate.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, come fiscal year 18, uh, when, when, uh, when the, when the actuary measures it again, we expect it to be about, we think it's going to, well, you know, uh, it will be most likely at least 12 million. Yes.
And right now, it's at four.
So right now, uh, because I'm correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Correct, yeah.
And, and, and that, that difference is primarily because of the method of reporting?
Correct, correct. Because I, because right now, the method of reporting is under, uh, 45. So 45, you, you only report, uh, you know, what they allow. So, yeah.
So are they changing it so that it's looking at it over the full actuarial life of the obligations, much the same way they do with the pensions?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, correct. And then, um, any other questions on that? Okay. Lastly, uh, on, on page 64, on page 64, again, this is, um, I think what Cathy, uh, pointed it out. Uh, under page 64, note 15, subsequent event, um, in December 2016, CalPERS has voted to lower the, the discount rate from 7.5 to 7% over the next three fiscal years. So the impact of the, uh, of that discount rate is going to increase the pension liability. Uh, so when they increase the pension liability, it means that the pension cost will, uh, increase. And it also means that, you know, the, um, um, the city's expense and your check that you're going to write to CalPERS will increase. So, and even like half a percent increase is huge. So, yeah, so, okay.
We're seeing this year what an eighth will do.
Pardon?
We're seeing this year what an eighth will do.
Correct, correct, yes, yes, yeah, so.
Other questions? Mr. Wong, Larry?
Um, you know, in reference to note 10, uh, was that information provided to you by CalPERS or was that a calculation that, uh, your organization did? There, there was, um, effectively, an analysis done using different hypothetical discount rates.
So, so basically what, uh, CalPERS does is CalPERS provide, uh, CalPERS provide most of the information. So CalPERS provide, uh, you know, uh, because the city's plan is so-called a cost sharing plan. So in a cost sharing plan, the city is a, uh, one of the members of, uh, of all the cities that, uh, of all the, lumped together with other cities. So CalPERS will, will provide one report for all the cities and then you go through basically a calculation of the city's percentage for those plans. So, so basically, yes, basically, yes, and then we will calculate, um, how much is the city's portion. And, and there are some, uh, and some of it are based on, um, so, uh, so generally, yes. And there are some different inflow and outflow. I don't really want to go into it, but that's, uh, depends on how much the city contributed, but generally, yes.
No, I was just thinking in terms of the analysis, I mean, they provide a discount rate that's higher than the blended, uh, expectation for the return on assets.
Correct, so the discount rate is provided by them.
Yeah, so it makes absolutely no sense to present it that way.
Uh, correct, I, um, I agree. But then I think, uh, because I think all of us are, so I think all of us are required to follow whatever the actuary actually provided. So, yeah, correct.
Probably should be a footnote there then.
And, and, and I think, um, in the, uh, so I think in the report, we actually, uh, we actually talk, we actually discussed that the CalPERS is the actuary. Yeah, so, yeah. And, um, so that way, I think, uh, if you, if you use all the, uh, financial report from all the other cities that has CalPERS, then it becomes comparable. So I think that's the intention.
Yeah, but i- if you look at their hypothetical discussion of looking at the discount rate the way it is and then lowering it at different increments, the, the lowest increment they have is still higher than the expected return of their asset mix. So they should at least go down to that level.
So I think, um, so I think CalPERS has this thing, uh, they, uh, they call it the smoothing method, because I think they try to smooth it, the, the, uh, generally, they are, the way they do it is they try to smooth it in the long term so that there is no, uh, so that the impact to any of its member is not, uh, you know, so that you do not feel it suddenly in the short term. Because otherwise, I think, otherwise, uh, the, uh, year-to-year contribution to CalPERS will, um, you'll be, you know, there may be a sudden increase from year to year.
Well, it's understandable you have a cash flow issue because anytime you lower the discount rate, the, the employer has to put more into it. But if you're looking at the actual liability, if the expected return is, is even a lower discount rate, then it should be signaling to us what we can expect over the course, in this case, the next 10 years, which is what they're projecting, the projections they're giving us are.
Agreed, yeah. Yeah, so, uh, correct, so I think, uh, what CalPERS does is they have, um, so some of, so some of the projection is, uh, if you look on page 55, if there are differences in what, what, uh, if, if there are differences in what, uh, CalPERS discount rate is and what the actual performance of the investment is, there is, on page 55, there is, um, different inflow-outflow. If there are differences, then they would take the differences and amortize it over, right now, they use, uh, five years. So, yeah, so, so, yeah. So they, they use that amortization to, uh, try to smooth it out that the differences, um, over five years.
Yeah. I, I, I think the whole point of this, not rather than to go through the discussion in terms of the why, is that, um, you know, you can work with our staff on it, is that in any future reports, you know, it, it needs to signal that the actual liability is higher than is being depicted by the information they're giving to us.
Agreed, agreed.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions of Mr. Wong? Thank you so much. Really appreciate your expertise and all your work.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
You'll need to have a motion to accept the audit. Before you do that, I did want to acknowledge, this is not our norm to bring an audit this late after the end of the fiscal year. I want to thank the patience of the council. We had some internal issues come up that resulted in this being rescheduled a few times. It's tough when we're small, because when we're shorthanded internally, sometimes a procedure like an audit's a little tougher for us to get through.
Also, I want to express our appreciation to Cathy and her staff for all the effort and candor that went into this work. Uh, it's tough, tough to hear, but it's good to face, face the realities.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Councilmember Morrison?
I'll make the motion to accept the report, um, of the annual FY 2015-16 audit of the City of Larksburg Basic Financial Statements.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second on this item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, thank you very much. We'll move to the item eight point three on the agenda. Thank you so much, Cathy. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Cathy. Thanks, Mark.
Appointment of the Citizen of the Year. Is there a staff report?
Uh, it's really your item, Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh, we, we still have quite a ways till your curfew for the evening, so hopefully we can resolve it.
Yes, Dad.
Uh, I think, I think we're all ready.
We started an hour early, too.
Yeah, we did, uh, that's true. Uh, just to remind you, you don't have an adopted procedure here. It's been your practice to, uh, come and, and share some names and then make a nomination and, and take a vote.
Well, why don't we, uh, have that discussion? Councilmember Morrison, would you like to, to start?
Sure, thank you. Um, there's a gentleman I've been working closely with. His name is Larry Meredith. Larry Meredith, retired from the Human Resource Department of the County of Marin. He, um, also opened the Health and Wellness Campus, Campus in San Felle, and which houses the Marin Community Clinic. So that's, that's pretty special. Meredith, uh, Larry retired and when he retired, he said that there is a, um, his concern is the rapid aging of the county's residents. And as he says it, "I don't see it as a silver tsunami. I see it as a wave that we have to surf into age-friendly communities." So after retired, he, um, contacted Carla Condon and myself and we have started this Twin City Village that I know I've mentioned to you all. And it has been, it has been a huge success. So so far, we have 29 members and we have 26 volunteers and the membership is rapidly growing. So it's another huge success story for Larry Meredith. So I recommend Larry Meredith as our Citizen of the Year.
And he lives?
In Larksburg.
Forget that, but he lives in Baltimore Canyon, I think?
I think so. I'm not too sure.
And he's, he also is a big supporter of the Sherrig Center, uh, where it used to be the Marin Brain Injury Network, North Magnolia. Uh, other, other discussion or other, uh, names for consideration?
You know, one name for consideration, uh, you know, we, we being Kevin, myself, we had a discussion about it the other day only because he was, uh, wouldn't be here tonight. But, uh, I, I recognize that also as, as a solid nominee is Perry Butler. You know, the fact that he's a resident as well as a, a local business owner who has done a lot to change the south end of town in terms of its, um, business vitality and, you know, the energy that we have down there.
Is another good one.
Is that something the Chamber of Commerce, though, does? That business?
Business Citizen of the Year.
Do you have Business Citizen of the Year?
Yeah. Uh, well, those are good suggestions. If I, if I were to weigh in, I, I, I think they, uh, long overdue for Dr. Meredith to receive some acknowledgement for all of his work, not, not only for, uh, the entire county, but I think we should be very proud that he's a resident of our fair city. So is, is there a motion or is there a consensus first?
Sounds good to me.
I think all, both candidates are both well-deserving of that recognition.
But I wonder, I think Catherine has a really good point. I wonder if the Chamber of Commerce could?
Because we usually do Business Citizen.
We do.
Certainly that nomination can be made there.
I would be happy to, to nominate Perry for that, for the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, all right.
So do you have a motion, uh, Councilmember Morrison on Larksburg's Citizen of the Year?
I'd like to make motion to have Dr. Larry Meredith as a Citizen of the Year.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. Good choice.
You?
She said, she said nine.
I said 10:42, 9:42.
She called it to the minute.
You haven't adjured yet. He could stall it out now for a
He could stall it out now for a few minutes.
But this was like two and a half hours ago. I mean, it was almost like she had a crystal ball.
Okay, shall we adjourn, so I can get, oh, you got two minutes.
Can you have, I've got a minute. I appreciate that, but it may be best if Kevin.
So will you entertain a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn. I would suggest that we adjourn this evening in honor of Golden Gate Bridge and Highway Transportation District President, who died a week ago, Dietrich Stroh. He's been a great mentor to many of us in the county. He's been, been a consistent voice of common sense on many countywide issues, and I think it would be great if we could do that this evening. So I'll, I'll make that motion.
I would second that.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Can we send a letter to that effect? I can, I think I can get the name, contact information for his wife. And he also was the leader of CSW Stuber Stroh for many years, a longtime contractor to the City of Larkspur. Motion, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Sorry, I'm tired.
At 10:41.